Good evening. Let me call to order the regular meeting of the City Council for the City of St. Helena for June 12, 2018. Mr. Doring, would you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, sure. Place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Galbraith.
Here.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Doring.
Here.
Ellsworth.
Here.
Koberstein.
Here.
Next item is public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address us on matters of municipal concern that are not on our agenda this evening. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Does anybody wish to speak at public comment? The next item on our agenda is reports by staff and city council, future agenda items, and AB 1234 reports. Let me begin with the city manager.
No report tonight.
Ms. Mitz?
I have no report tonight either.
Mr. Fopoulos?
I am pleased to report that we received six RFPs for scanning, so I'm really excited to review them and come to the council at the June 26 meeting to award a contract.
Mr. Brown, special session.
The city council did meet this afternoon in closed session to discuss those two items designated on the closed session agenda for this afternoon. The city council made no reportable action during that meeting.
All right. Ms. Koberstein? Mr. Ellsworth?
I have two items. This Thursday evening at 6:00 PM, the summer concerts in the park at Lyman Park begin. So that's 6:00 PM this Thursday, so hopefully see folks there. And then the other thing I just wanted to bring up was that it's summer, school just got out, so there'll be kids walking and riding bikes around town. So if we all just sort of consider that as we drive around town and with our speed driving, that during the summer, more kids on bikes than walking around town during the day. And with traffic issues and the heat, to encourage cool heads while driving through the town. So, thank you.
All right. Mr. Doring?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. White?
Nothing.
I've got a few matters. First of all, let me express my delight, and I hope the city's delight, in seeing the piano in the park, back in the park. This evening, there was a young lad playing it, most enjoyably. It's great to see. Along with other mayors, I attended the second Silverado's game. They play at Napa Valley College. They play teams in other North Bay areas. They have an 80-game season. They're actually ahead a little bit today, as of today, I think maybe four to two. But I would certainly encourage all of us at least to think about attending one or two games during the Silverado season. It's at Napa Valley Community College. With respect to flood control, at the last meeting of the Flood Control and Conservation District, there was discussion by staff that they will be working with the city in terms of permitting and other work relating to dredging of Sulphur Creek near the bridge. It's a complicated process, but it's very nice that the Flood Control District will be providing significant technical help to city staff as we move along, and they described the help that they planned to provide at some length at that meeting. I think it's appropriate for the mayor to comment just briefly on the closing of Tara Restaurant. It's been in the top 100 restaurants in the North Bay for a long time, 30 years, 1988 to 2018, and certainly the proprietors, Lisa Domeny and Harold Stone Sun, have made a terrific contribution to the community. And it's, I think, with deep regret that at least I see it close down. But life goes on. It is hard, though, to lose one of our top three restaurants as recognized by the Chronicle. And then one other item, I received a meeting notice from the Department of Parks and Recreation, Office of Historic Preservation, State Historical Resources Commission. It was for August 3, 2018, in the State Building in Sacramento, 9:00 AM. And what it relates to is the placement of our St. Helena Cemetery, public cemetery, on the National Register of Historic Places. This is a pretty big moment, and I received the materials that had been submitted by the St. Helena Cemetery Association in conjunction with the St. Helena Historical Society. It contains a terrific historical review of that public cemetery, and I know that members of these organizations will be attending that hearing, and I trust it will go smoothly. But I think it's really a milestone that the cemetery is being considered for a spot on the Register of Historic Places. So that's what I have.
We might have to conjure a few spirits.
The next item on our agenda, 6.1, is introduction of the St. Helena Planning and Community Improvement Department. Mr. House?
Thank you, Mayor, council, members of the public. You know, planning and building, we don't necessarily get a week like Public Works or maybe a month like I think the library might get. And so summertime is when construction season kicks off typically, and so we just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce everyone in the department here. So this is Aaron Heacock, he's our senior planner. This is Lily Bianco, she's a contract planner. She works in the office about half-time, but we treat her just like all the rest of the staff at City Hall. This is Zinyam Gamaro, she's our admin assistant at the front counter. She's who you talk to when you call the planning department. She also clerks the planning commission meetings. Many of you have probably seen her. This is Sophia Johnson, she is our building permit technician. So anytime you call in to talk to anyone about building permits, she is the person that you're chatting with. And then this is Philip Henry, he's our building official. You know, since I was hired here as a director, I've had the privilege of hiring all of these folks, except Aaron, who was here before me and has had to tolerate that. But I couldn't ask for a more stellar team. We, you know, really put customer service as a very high priority, and I told each of them that when we were interviewing, and they all embody that philosophy. And I hope in your communication with them, you've experienced that. And then I will also give Philip a plug. He lives in town, he was able to find a place in town when he moved up here. And I'm sure many of you read the article in the paper about the vehicle that went into the building, Lolo's Consignment. Philip was in town, able to respond to that very quickly, early in the morning, go do an assessment, find that the building was structurally sound, and it's just a real privilege and benefit to having him here in town. I will add that Zinyam is also a graduate of St. Helena High School, and so she has a local connection as well. And like I said, we just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce everyone to the, or all the folks in the department to the public. And then, of course, many of the council members have already been working with them. But just wanted to have an opportunity. Thank you.
Well, terrific. Thank you very much. The first one, the first proclamation is LGBTQ Pride Month. LGBTQ Pride Month, June 2018. Whereas June is commemorated in International Gay Pride Month, honoring the history, achievements, and contributions of LGBTQ people, are celebrated around the globe, and whereas the City of St. Helena celebrates the vast diversity of its citizens, including those who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning, and seeks to be a safe, healthy, and inclusive place for all citizens and their families. And whereas the City of St. Helena strives to be a community that offers equal opportunity, whose citizens all deserve to live with dignity and respect, free from fear and violence, and protected against discrimination regardless of their gender identity or sexual orientation. Whereas the City of St. Helena is committed to support and encourage diversity in the workplace and throughout the community. Whereas June has become a symbolic month in which lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning, and intersex people, their families, friends, and allies come together in various celebrations of freedom and pride. Whereas California has been a leader in advancing the civil rights of its LGBTQ citizens. And while further progress is needed, it is important to recognize and celebrate the substantial gains that have been achieved. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Allen Galbraith, Mayor of the City of St. Helena, do hereby proclaim June 2018 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month, and invite everyone to reflect on ways we can all live and work together with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding. Dated June 12, 2018. Signed by me.
Hello, my name is Marta Hess, and I'm the president of the St. Helena High School Gay-Straight Alliance. Thank you, Mayor Galbraith, Vice Mayor White, and members of the St. Helena High School, the St. Helena City Council, for this proclamation of pride. The St. Helena High School GSA has been active since about 2009, and like other gay-straight alliances across the nation, we have three important roles at our school. GSAs provide support. Many GSAs function as a support group and provide safety for students who identify as gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, or questioning. GSAs build community. GSAs are also social groups. They provide a sense of community and a space for LGBTQ and straight ally youth to build a social network. GSAs take action to create change. In addition to support, some GSAs work on educating themselves and the broader school community about sexual orientation and gender identity issues. Our mission statement is as follows. The St. Helena High School Gay-Straight Alliance strives to encourage active discussion and participation from students, staff, and community around issues of LGBTQ plus, social justice, and equality. Through increasing awareness about the LGBTQ plus community and its struggles for social freedom, our goal is to create a safer school environment for students of all gender identities and sexual orientations. We thank you for your official proclamation of pride. Your official recognition of pride means that you, as a city council, recognize the rights of any group to celebrate their achievements of LGBTQ people, and you recognize the rights for LGBT people to be celebrated as equal members of our society.
I'm Lisa Lund, I'm the staff advisor. I've been the staff advisor since 2009, and we'd like to present this flag for display at Carnegie, at the Carnegie Building?
Yes.
That's right, not Carnegie Hall, Carnegie Building.
Carnegie.
Yeah, that would be great. But once again, your official proclamation of pride demonstrates to the community of St. Helena that you value us, you value the allies, and you value the LGBTQ community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rosemary Vertulo, and I'm president of PFLAG Napa. PFLAG Napa and the whole organization of PFLAG would like to thank Mayor Galbraith and the city council for this proclamation. It really means a lot to us. PFLAG is an ally organization of the LGBTQ plus community, and we've been in existence for 45 years. The Napa chapter has been here for a little over five years. And what we do is we are an ally organization united with LGBTQ plus people to move equality forward. And by the way we do that is through support of the community, education, and advocacy of the LGBTQ plus community. And again, I want to thank all of you for doing this proclamation. Really means a great deal to us. Thank you.
Thank you. [applause]
Mr. Mayor, may I just make a few comments? Mr. Mayor?
You're certainly may.
Just before you go to your second one, I had a couple, just a brief statement. For me, this proclamation is more than just words on a piece of paper, and I hope you feel the same. Let's be clear about what we are saying as a community as we take a moment to let our mayor's words sink in. We are all proclaiming the mayor, the city council, and the City of St. Helena, no to oppression, no to bigotry, no to shame, no to exclusion. We are proudly proclaiming that we are all made perfectly, that we all belong. We are honoring the countless LGBTQ plus people who have fought and died for the right of all of us to live and love as we are created to do. And finally, we are expressing our deepest thanks and appreciation to you, members of PFLAG, and GSA, and other allies who continue to make an important difference in the lives of so many LGBTQ plus people. Thank you for all your courage, your strength, and your generosity of spirit.
Thank you. Councilmembers. Our next proclamation is Elder Independent Adult Abuse Prevention Month. Is Mr. Cherry here? Oh, we've got, go ahead. Proclamation, Elder Independent Adult Abuse Prevention Month, June 2018. Whereas every year, more than 2 million disabled and elderly citizens are victims of physical and emotional abuse and neglect and exploitation, and they are denied many of their rights. And whereas in 2017, approximately 450,000 more vulnerable adults were the victims of abuse, neglect, or exploitation in the United States. And whereas the health and well-being of disabled and elderly people in our state should be one of our highest priorities and of concern to all Americans. And whereas no aspect of our society, technology, agriculture, science, religion, sports, education, would enjoy its current prominence without the contributions from those who are elderly or have disabilities. And whereas we can all benefit from the wisdom and knowledge acquired by Americans who are elderly or have disabilities, the experience of their past can help our state meet the challenge of its future. And whereas people who are elderly or have disabilities are among the most important resources of our state, and it is fitting that we recognize the need to protect their health, safety, and rights. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Allen Galbraith, Mayor of the City of St. Helena, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2018 to be Elder Independent Adult Abuse Prevention Month in St. Helena, and urge all citizens to work together in the years to come to help reduce abuse and neglect of people who are elderly or have disabilities. Dated this 12th day of June 2018, signed by me. Thank you very much. Would you like to speak?
I'll make a brief, that last one was a hard act to follow. I appreciate everything you guys do, and then your statements, I almost teared up a little bit. So, my name is Joe Cherry, I'm the manager for Napa County Adult Protective Services in the Public Guardians Office. With me is Julie Spencer from Rianda House. As many people have heard or read somewhere that the population in California is aging quickly. As many of you probably don't know, folks, every day, about 1,000 people turn 65 in California. While the state average is the number of folks over 60 versus the number of folks under 90 is going to intersect at 2020, it intersected in Napa County in 2015. What that means is that we are aging faster in Napa County than the California average, which means that there is a lot of folks that we are entrusting in keeping our aging population active, engaged in our community, and trying to be healthy in everything they do. The one issue that we are seeing is the silent epidemic of elder abuse, and that's what we're here for this proclamation about, is folks being aware that it is an epidemic that is happening. In Napa County, we investigated about 700 referrals of abuse and neglect in this last fiscal year. That is probably only about 25% of what's really going on out there. So it's under-reported, it's under-investigated. We work heavily with our law enforcement allies and partners, as well as our community partners, to try to provide those supports, but it's one of those things that we know it's out there, but we have to be able to go out and see what, and help in any way possible. So, thank you very much, I appreciate this. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. My name's Julie Spencer, I'm the director at Rianda House. And with partnerships like Adult Protective Services, what we're able to do is someone can walk into our center and say, "Help, I don't know where to go." And we have this partner that is amazing at being able to have so many deep resources, that we don't have to be the experts, but we know who the experts are. And they can, we give them phone numbers, we connect them through counseling, through programs, and it creates a broader reach and a greater net to our community. So we're really, really proud partners of the county. And the officials in St. Helena, too, the police department and the fire department can call us, too, if they don't know where to go. So it's a nice, broad net that we're proud to be a part of. So thank you for this acknowledgement, council and mayor.
Thank you. The next item are consent items. They are items 8.1 through 8.8. With respect to 8.1, there's been a minor revision on page 87, I have my notes, but it doesn't seem right. Oh, in section 8.7, where it says Mayor Galbraith, it should say Vice Mayor White. There was an updated numbering with respect to 8.6. There's some correction in the summary page with respect to 8.8, but these are all mechanical issues that don't require that we take these matters off the consent calendar. Does any member of the public or any council member wish any item to be removed from the consent calendar?
On principle, I'd like to remove 8.8.
All right. Is that principle LE or AL?
LE. I don't think we should adopt a huge budget without saying something about it.
All right, all right. All right, at this point, the chair would entertain a motion to approve consent items 8.1, 8.2, 8.3, 8.4, 8.5, 8.6, and 8.7. Second. Mr. Fopoulos?
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Koberstein?
Yes.
Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. That takes us back to 8.8. And Ms. Mitz?
Does everyone say a few comments?
Yeah. I mean, I don't want a big report, but I just think as a matter of the way we operate, when we adopt a budget like this every year, it should not be on the consent agenda. Any member of the public could pull it, but I would invite them to make comments. And from my own perspective, I have to say the budget process this year was very smooth and well-organized, and I would just like to invite our manager or finance director to make any comments that they wish.
I can make some brief comments, just overviewing the budget and the budget document and the process that we had. As many of you know, on May 9, we did have a draft budget that was presented to city council for discussion, review, and direction. At that time, the city council did provide several great suggestions or direction to city council for us to come up with the adopted budget, or the draft, I'm sorry, proposed budget that's in front of you tonight. Some of these directions included providing initial $30,000 to the Boys and Girls Club for the transition of teen programming, decreasing the city attorney budget, the addition of two full-time firefighters to the City of St. Helena. And in addition, it did give the staff some additional time that we were able to receive some more solidified numbers as far as workers' compensation, general health insurance. So we're able to more fine-tune and, you know, sharpen our pencil on the budget even further. The budget document that is presented to you tonight is the finalized proposed budget for fiscal year 1819, which is balanced and it's being presented to city council for adoption. A general, a summary of the three major funds is a general fund. We are looking at a 26% reserve, and the overall budget is a $14.2 million budget for revenues and expenditures. The water fund, it is estimated the revenue of $6 million, expenses of $5.8 million, and that also allows us to do some transfers into our capital improvement funds. And that leaves the percentage of expenses at 59% for our fund balance. For the wastewater fund, estimated revenue is 3.1, estimated expenses is 2.5. In addition, we are transferring money over to much-needed wastewater CIP projects. And that, as stated in the May 9 meeting, this is the first time that our cash balance in our wastewater fund, I am very happy to, pleased to report, is at 25%, which, since I've been here, that has never been at 25%. So very, very excited about that number. The overall fiscal impact, the total proposed budget, including all the funds, is $37.4 million. As stated earlier, general fund is $14.3, water fund is $6.4, and the wastewater operating fund is $2.9 million.
All right. Any further council comment? Is there any public comment?
I think the manager has.
Oh. Why don't I offer a few comments as well? Just briefly, a lot of work this year has been put into establishing organizational goals and objectives, stabilizing operations, and also enhancing public engagement. And in the fall, the council adopted three-year goals and 12-month strategic objectives, which guide the staff's work and really which are reflected in this budget document. In the budget transmittal message, there's a paragraph about the economic outlook, and it notes that we've reached a 17-year low on unemployment, but typically that happens at the end of an expansion. And so there's a note and a cautionary note here that I've included to make sure that we continue to monitor our revenue growth carefully and then adjust swiftly if conditions change. So that's just something that we'll be keeping an eye on over the next year. And then finally, I want to acknowledge the council's leadership and help in putting this budget together, as well as all the staff's work, which went deep in the organization, contributing ideas and doing work in preparing this budget. So a lot of thanks to everyone.
All right. Any public comment? Any further council comment? My only comment would be, again, to stress that residents read the budget message prepared by the city manager, that was before us previously. But I would especially like to focus on page eight, the paragraph at the end. "I have great appreciation for the collaboration, the long hours that were invested in producing this budget. An extraordinary amount of this effort was managed by the city finance department staff led by our finance director, Dr. April Mitz, who I credit for steadfastly ensuring our budget process ran smoothly and adhered to schedule." So thank you, Ms. Mitz. At this point, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the operating budget for the City of St. Helena for fiscal year 2018, 2019. So moved.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Ellsworth?
Yes.
Koberstein?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Public hearings. First, we have one public hearing which relates to our, is it our sign ordinance? I think it is.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it relates to our sign ordinance. So let me turn that one over to...
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I'll take this one. I'll keep this brief, as I know you guys have a full agenda this evening. As prioritized by the council and the planning commission, staff has been bringing forth various zoning code cleanups to the commission for discussion. On May 15, 2018, the planning commission reviewed proposed changes to the city's sign ordinance, prioritizing unanimously recommending that the city council only adopt the ch- so that our code is compliant with state law before the November election. With that, I, myself, Noah, and the City Attorney are all here, if you should have any questions on the ordinance amendments before you.
Are there any preliminary questions? Yes, Ms. Koberstein?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm wondering if something's falling through the cracks here. We, I'm looking at page 469, and we seem to be regulating temporary non-commercial signs. It seems to only be in residential districts. Are we not regulating them in commercial districts?
At this time, we are not. That did come up at Planning Commission, they wish to discuss that further, is it has implications on the amount of total square footage businesses can put on their signs?
When would that, when would that be discussed? When would be the?
At a future Planning Commission meeting.
I mean, personally, I'd be in favor of extending the same rules to our commercial areas that we're imposing on our residential, but I may be only one person who feels that way.
And staff would welcome council discussion on that topic. The Commission kind of struggled with that idea, as Senior Planner Heacock identified. There was concerns over what the ultimate allowable signage would be for commercial properties and whether those specific allowances should be extended to commercial. So, if the Council is supportive of granting commercial properties the same additional non-commercial sign rights as residential properties are granted in this ordinance, that would be a beneficial direction that staff could take back to the Commission to further discuss the other changes in the code.
I guess that's the question. Are we extending rights, or are we telling the commercial district they can do anything they want? It's not clear to me.
Other sections of the code have very prescriptive regulations on commercial signs. However, as you pointed out, there is no reference to non-commercial signage for commercial properties.
So, in plain language, during an election time, there can be as many signs as anybody wants all over the business district, and we are not regulating them any way whatsoever. But we are regulating signs in residential areas. Is that a correct interpretation of what this does?
That was not the intent. And staff did go back and forth a little bit. These changes are coming from direction provided out of case law that prohibits essentially the regulation of folks' free speech, or the complete elimination of folks' free speech rights by putting up signage. However, we had both two situations. One, campaign signs, and two, free speech signs that may say "World Peace" or something like that. And so, we were trying to capture both of those, specific to residential properties. However, it is not the intent to allow unregulated free speech or campaign signage on commercial properties.
If I might weigh in as well, I haven't undertaken to review the zoning ordinance or the other sign provisions of our zoning ordinance, but the city's zoning ordinance, like most zoning ordinances in the state, is deemed to be a permissive zoning ordinance. And what that means is that if there is not an explicit provision allowing something that is deemed to be prohibited, here, I would interpret this language that's being proposed as allowing these signs only in residential districts, and the absence of a provision saying that these regulations apply in commercial districts would indicate that under your permissive zoning scheme, these would not apply in the, I'm sorry. The signs that these regulations allow in residential districts would not be allowed in your commercial district.
Well, maybe for people who aren't into interpreting zoning ordinances, we could simply say that temporary non-commercial signs are permitted only in residential districts. Then we've solved the problem, if that's what the intent is.
It is residential only. If you look under 17148090 in the strike through, it says temporary non-commercial signs in residential districts are permitted. So, it's only relating to residential.
I'm not trying to nitpick, I just don't see the word "only" there, but I've said what I had to say.
Well, I mean, I think you're making a point that maybe is worth looking at, is there a way to interpret it by not saying anything that it is permissible? Could somebody make that argument, if it's not written that it's not?
The case law hasn't addressed this, but the argument would be made for those who reside or do business in your commercial districts, that they're the same constitutional rights should obtain in commercial districts as in residential districts. This language, as I read it, only applies in residential districts, but the argument would be that the Constitution trumps your zoning ordinance. That's, that's as, kind of as good as I can get on this. The language of it, as I said, would, would apply in a manner that would prohibit these signs in your commercial districts. I'm seeing, you know, a look on the Planning Director's face that suggests he, he might not agree wholeheartedly, I can.
Well, I think there is the, the free speech issue for folks in a commercial district who have property or business in a commercial district, I think does apply. However, the City Attorney's point that that wasn't addressed in the Supreme Court case that came down, it was specific to residential. However, if we're trying to fix the code and be compliant with the law and the intent, I would assume, and I would assume the direction would be to allow campaign signs as well as non-commercial free speech signs in commercial and residential districts.
But in a, in a commercial zone, could it be, could somebody interpret it to say, "I can put up 60 campaign signs as opposed to two"?
So, I'm trying to do some, just read through all of the code right now to see where these kind of threads of logic tie to, tie to the arguments together. If you read section 17148090, which is temporary non-commercial signs, there's section A, which applies to general regulations. And this is where residential districts are specifically referenced. Section B.
Is all zoning.
All zoning districts. And it provides additional specific regulations regarding election and campaign signs. So, from the staff perspective, this does capture that intent, but to Councilmember Koberstein's point, it does not translate to free speech signs in non-residential districts, such as a "World Peace" sign, or something along those lines.
Yeah, and we just had some free speech signs during last fall, all over town, in residential and commercial districts, and they were considered to be free speech, not election signs. So, I'm just raising the question for my fellow council members, should they be treated the same?
To me, it's worth having it spelled out, you know?
So, the direction can be provided here, this is the first reading of an ordinance. The direction can be provided here, staff can make minor changes with clear direction. And I'm looking at the City Attorney to make sure I identify the process correctly.
That's, that's exactly right. And the change that's being discussed now would be appropriate for you to make this evening. So, that would be fine. It's properly agenda, it's in, it's before you.
So, a very simple correction to this could be in that same section, 17148090, general regulations. Temporary non-commercial signs in all districts are permitted at all times without a sign permit, subject to the following regulations. And that would basically allow someone to have their, thank you, public safety officials or free, you know, "World Peace," or those types of signs, on their business front, getting to Councilmember Koberstein's point.
Does that cover it, do you think?
Yeah, I'd rather not leave people guessing about what the regulations are.
I would add that that is a safer approach from a constitutional standpoint as well, although the cases haven't gone there yet. It would be an area that would be ripe for review, so.
So, can we have the precise change?
So, section 17148090, temporary non-commercial signs, A, general regulations, based on staff's direction or understanding of the Council's direction, would be revised to read temporary non-commercial signs in all residential, or all districts are permitted at all times without a sign permit, subject to the following regulations.
Okay. Thank you. Any other initial questions? Let me open the public hearing. Anybody wish to comment at public hearing? Let me close the public hearing. And any further council discussion? And the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the first reading with the correction that was made in 17148.090A in the line that begins temporary non-commercial signs in all districts, et cetera.
So moved.
Second.
And you are approving by title only and waiving further reading?
Absolutely.
Okay. Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Koberstein?
Yes.
Ellsworth?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. All right, that takes us to new business. The first item of new business deals with the agreement relating to archaeological collections coming out of the flood project. Ms. Mitz, is that you?
It is, thank you. So, one component of the St. Helena Flood Control Project, or just the flood project, was the excavation of four prehistoric sites. On January 9th, 2018, city staff did bring to City Council a report and recommended resolution approving a contract with Pacific Legacy in an amount not to exceed $86,800. And this is to complete the work necessary for the archaeological collections. There are three different tasks involved for this contract with Pacific Legacy. It's cleaning and cataloging the artifacts, curation preparation, and repatriation of artifacts where necessary. Public comment was received during this meeting from the St. Helena Historical Society, requesting receipt of the artifacts, since the artifacts do in fact belong to the City of St. Helena. At that time, City Council did ask that an amendment be made to the agreement for curation for archaeological collections with Sonoma State, that would allow the artifacts of the collection to be able to come back to the community at the request of the City Council, when the guidelines for curation of archaeological collections are met. So, in the discussion portion, the item that was changed for the agreement is we did add a continuation sheet. And John Holston from Pacific Legacy is also here tonight. And what he did is he contacted Sonoma State, as well as the Native American Tribe, to come up with an agreement that everyone could live with as far as what could be on this curation sheet. And then we also did work closely with the Historical Society of St. Helena. So, there's three things that have been added to the continuation sheet. The first is that the St. Helena Historical Society will have access to the collections from the St. Helena Flood Control Project for educational and display purposes, according to the conditions set forth by the David A. Frederickson Archaeological Facility for Loans. The second is that the City of St. Helena may at some future date, or actually will at some future date, transfer the collection to their custody, or the custody of the St. Helena Historical Society, subject to the establishing of an adequate curatorial facility. And then the third is that the Mishawal Tribe of Alexander Valley will be notified in writing upon the loaner transfer of collections, just so they are aware of where the collections actually are housed. The artifacts themselves, although the artifacts are the property of the City of St. Helena, because we did receive state and federal money, we do have to, we do have to follow very strict guidelines in order to maintain the integrity of the artifacts and allow use of the collections for educational and research purposes. And the other reason why we do have to follow this, in addition to receiving state and federal funding, is that the artifacts were in fact prehistoric in nature. I've learned a lot about our prehistoric nature here. We did very, I did research various documents related to the treatment of the artifacts, specifically the requirements for curatorial facilities. So, attachment one of the, the staff report is a brief summary, and then the attachments following that are actual sections of dialogue that, that do mandate what, what we have to look for in a curatorial facility. During this process, from the January date until now, we have been working with the St. Helena Historical Society to come up with an appropriate agreement. The St. Helena Historical Society is a local nonprofit 501(c)(3), founded and with the mission to collect, preserve, exhibit, and interpret, and provide access to the history of St. Helena. Recognizing the importance of this, back in, I believe it was 2002, the City of St. Helena did enter into agreement with the St. Helena Historical Society, where it does state that if for any reason, we are not anticipating it, but if for any resolu, any reason the Historical Society does dissolve, the City of St. Helena does have the first right of refusal for the entire collection. So, that way, it's, it can ensure that any collections that they have for our local history can stay within St. Helena. And due to the longstanding agreements with the St. Helena Historical Society and their commitment to the local history, we do feel that it's fitting that if an adequate, if and when an adequate curatorial facility is developed, that those collections can be turned over to them. The fiscal, fiscal impact, it's for a not-to-exceed amount of $86,800, and this has been approved in the fiscal year 1718 budget. And staff does recommend that City Council adopt the resolution, authorizing the City Manager to execute this agreement. And we do have John Holston here to answer any questions, as well as the President of our Historical Society, Suzanne Silverstream is here as well.
All right. Any initial questions from members of the Council?
I just had one question. I assume that this, the funding is coming from Measure A funds?
It was actually from general fund money that we transferred into the Measure A Fund this past fiscal year, so it was done as part of the transfer. So, it is approved in the 1718 budget.
Okay, but it, has it been budgeted for several years and just rolled over?
This portion of it was never budgeted in the Measure A Funds. This was something, is when we were looking at everything within the flood control project, this was one of those loose ends that need to be tied up, and so we did bring it to City Council for last year to transfer the money from general fund to Measure A.
And that is the case because we don't have any money in, in the Measure A account that would be available for this?
That is correct.
Right. My memory is that, is that Measure A, which, collection of Measure A funds comes to an end here very quickly, June 30th, and that all the money that we will receive goes back to pay off our loan to the State Revolving Fund, and when that's all said and done, we still owe about a million dollars. Is that roughly right?
That is roughly right. That, that is what our estimates are currently, yes.
Okay. Let me open the public comment. Would, Ms. Alvestram?
Good evening, council members and staff and community. As President of the, I'm reading this because I get real nervous. As President of the St. Helena Historical Society, I would like to take this time to thank you all for realizing the importance of the city to retain ownership of the Native American artifacts found during the flood project on Pope Street in 2006. A special thank you for, to Mark Prestwich and April Mitz for the hours of research that April has done, and getting sure that all these things were taken care of correctly, and working with us to develop the language in the agreement that will benefit all of us in our community and the valley. The St. Helena Historical Society, as April already took the words out of my mouth, but I'm going to say them again. The St. Helena Historical Society was founded in 2002 with a mission to collect, preserve, exhibit, educate, and provide access to the history of the City of St. Helena from the arrival of the first Native Americans to the present day. We have been able to achieve most of what our mission states, however, we have not been able to provide access to our collection as yet, but we're working on that now, as I speak. Our hope is that we can work with the city to house the important artifacts from the Vineyard Valley dig in a museum-quality environment, and to finally make them and other elements of our collection available to the community. The Historical Society is committed to quality archival stewardship. We are members of the American Association for Local and State History and the American Alliance of Museums. In 2013, we had an assessment done of our collection through the National Institute for Storage and Conservation. We are working now with advisors and consultants to provide maximum security and museum quality for these artifacts that belong to us all. Again, thank you for this amazing opportunity to house and potentially provide access to this treasure of Native American artifacts. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Well-stated. Any further public comment?
My name's Bobby Monet, and I'm speaking as a citizen. I just have a question. I'm wondering if the tribes from whom these artifacts are donated, you know, inadvertently donated. donated, if they still exist, and if so, have they been contacted at all about any of the artifacts?
Ms. Mitz, do you want to respond to that?
I believe John might actually have a more accurate representation, but there are portions of them that do still exist, and they have been contacted. And so, that was one of the reasons that we added, that the stipulation was added in there, that whenever the artifacts are loaned or moved, that we do have to notify them. But I can let John speak on the specific tribes that would represent that.
You did a great job. No, actually, we've been in contact with Scott Gabalon, who's the tribal chairman for the Mawashville tribe, so he's aware, sometimes he doesn't return phone calls, but he is aware of what's going on with the collections. And that's all I can say. So, pretty much contacted a number of people, the State Water Resources Board and other institutions, to make sure. And April did a great job of the, I was reading it last night, oh my God. So, anyway, so, yes, they've been contacted.
All right. Thank you very much. Any further public comment? All right, let me close public comment. Is there any further council discussion? Chair would entertain a motion to approve the staff recommendation with respect to item ten point one. Moved to approve.
Second.
Mr. Paplos?
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Coburnstein?
Yes.
Ellsworth?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Thank you very much. Ten point, the next item we're going to take is ten point six. Councilmember Coburnstein made the point that it made sense to consider ten point six ahead of ten point three, and, ten point two, excuse me. And it's a good suggestion, so we're going to take ten point six next.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's okay with me.
Okay.
So, ten point six is a resolution opposing a potential November two thousand and eighteen ballot measure entitled the Tax Fairness, Transparency, and Accountability Act of two thousand and eighteen. And this issue arose at your prior council meeting on May twenty-second in the context of a discussion about a potential November ballot measure related to our transient occupancy tax. And in the context of that discussion and the distinction between a general tax and a special tax, today, current state law requires a two-thirds vote for special taxes when funds are dedicated for a specific purpose, and it requires a majority vote for general taxes when they're not dedicated for a specific purpose and can be used for general municipal purposes. And I mentioned that there is a measure that is today going through signature verification. It appears that they have surpassed the required signatures necessary to qualify. They're simply verifying those signatures today. It appears that it's going to be placed on the November two thousand and eighteen ballot. This measure would require a two-thirds vote. It has a number of characteristics, but one of the most important is that general taxes under this proposal, if adopted by voters in California, would be required to pass with a two-thirds vote rather than a general fifty percent plus one, which is the rule today. The measure also has, it's also retroactive to January one, two thousand and eighteen, so any local measure placed on the ballot at this last June election, if it didn't secure two-thirds vote, and this November ballot measure passes, those measures and those local agencies will not pass if they didn't hit the two-thirds threshold. It will also mandate a two-thirds vote of the city council to approve all fees. It would also increase the city's legal burden from a preponderance of the evidence to clear and convincing evidence, to establish that a fee is not a tax, and it would mandate that a city prove that the amount is reasonable and only covers actual costs. So, the resolution was requested by the council that we bring this forward to you for an opposed position, and that is the recommendation.
Any initial council discussion? Let me open the public hearing. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this proposed state proposition? Let me close the public hearing. I'm a little bit at a loss as to what to say here, other than it's going on the ballot, and while I certainly oppose it, it seems sensible to me that we have to proceed on the basis that it's likely to pass, unfortunately.
I would agree. I think it's a tremendous incursion on our ability as council people to raise revenue in our own city, to do what we think needs to be done. And as for what we're going to talk about next, TOT, I think we have to proceed under the view that four out of the five of us should be passing whatever we pass or don't pass, and that we have to go out there and make the case for a two-thirds vote, because if this legislation would pass, we've done all of this for nothing.
And there is indication that it will pass on the state level?
The title of the measure, the Tax Fairness, Transparency, and Accountability Act, sounds very attractive. And so, the impression among staff at the League of California Cities is that this particular measure has a very high likelihood of being attractive to voters in California. It will be important for communities to explain the measure and the nuances of the measure. For example, there's a reference to the idea that fees require additional consideration, and I can tell you that in the past, before the Right to Vote on Taxes Act, Prop two eighteen passed in the mid-nineties, the city council could adjust business license taxes, fees at a council meeting. And so, there were a number, when this measure passed, it required those fees, if you were simply adjusting them for inflation, for example, to be placed on a future ballot. And so, what happened is cities frankly wouldn't spend the money, five, ten, twenty thousand dollars, just to ask the question, shall we allow the business license tax to adjust with inflation? And what's happened is you see a number of cities, the city included, where we just simply haven't made changes to those numbers for a couple of decades. And this is an example of when we add another layer of complexity, that certain fees have to go to a ballot, it becomes very costly, and that's a taxpayer expense as well.
Any further council comment? Is the council of view that we should go on record opposing this proposition?
Yes. I would agree.
Would you make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Call please.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Coburnstein?
Yes.
Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. All right, that takes us back to ten point two. And that's a discussion of placing a TOT measure on the ballot in November. Mr. Pausch?
Actually, I'll take this one. This is really a continuation of the discussion that you had on May twenty-second. At that time, we talked about the conceptual idea of placing a transient occupancy tax increase of one percent on the November two thousand and eighteen ballot. Representatives from Visit Napa Valley attended that meeting and spoke to you about that in the past as well. The increase is intended to be a special tax, and this is a measure that would be placed on the county and also show up on any resident's ballot in the city limits. And each city or town in the county has been asked to consider this a similar measure. And at the meeting of the twenty-second, there was discussion of potentially considering a two percent adjustment rather than a one percent. There were conversations about, should this be a general tax to be, the proceeds of which could be used for multiple, any municipal purpose, or should the revenues be dedicated to housing in particular? And we have continued that discussion to today. I have handed out for you a copy of a couple of items. One is language that's been drafted to define the term for affordable housing services and programs. This is a phrase that's incorporated into the ballot measure. And in yellow, this is the question that the county has, at the moment, drafted, so this is still potentially subject to change, but this is the current ballot question that the county is looking at. The language above it, this definition, explains how the resources would be used if the resources were dedicated for housing purposes. It's important to note the reference to the hundred and twenty percent of area median income. This is a threshold that would allow the city to potentially leverage local funds for grants. And the hundred and twenty percent is a flexible number that would meet essentially the minimum standards of grant programs that might ask for a local match. And if you desired something more stringent, we would need to write that in, and direction would be appropriate to provide direction on that. Below the ballot question in yellow are simply a couple of other ways of writing a ballot question. And this is the one percent variety. One percent, we estimate, would generate approximately two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars annually. If you turn to the next page, there are two conceptual ballot questions, which really are the same as the prior two you just looked at, just in the two percent variety. And so, that number is five hundred and fifty-eight thousand. And just listening to the conversation at the prior meeting about interest potentially in general taxes, as well as potential interest in dedicating revenues for housing, I have drafted a conceptual hybrid approach that would provide, would allow for the use of one percent of the two, half of the proceeds, to be used for any municipal purpose, including housing, and also require dedication of one percent specifically to housing-related goals and programs. You've received some correspondence that was attached to the agenda, and I believe we may have distributed an additional letter this afternoon. And Catherine Haywood, representing Visit Napa Valley, is here today with us, and we're looking for direction. It would also be helpful, because from a timing standpoint, what we'll need to do is, our intent is to publish the agenda for the meeting of the twenty-sixth, this Friday? This Friday. So, we have about three days to work on the ballot question and refining the ordinance. We have a draft. I have drafts of an ordinance today, but the key element of the ordinance truly is the definition here, and whether or not you prefer to dedicate resources to housing specifically or have an interest in more flexibility.
All right. Any initial comments from council? Should we hear from Ms. Haywood? Yeah. Thank you.
Good evening. Catherine Haywood with Visit Napa Valley. And I'm just here to say that we are in support of the original proposal of one percent TOT increase special tax, intended to be focused solely on housing. Other jurisdictions have been working on this language reflecting a unified regional approach to achieve a consolidated measure. It's the language that will be proposed by Yountville, the city of Napa, and Napa County at this time. I don't have final language for Calistoga. And also, this particular language has been supported by the lodging industry. That's all I have.
What about American Canyon?
American Canyon, my understanding from their city manager is they don't have to go through ordinance readings, they just do a resolution, so they have a little bit more time to be contemplating this. As you might be aware, they're grappling with traffic issues and trying to figure out how to address that. Any other questions? Thank you.
No. Any further public comment?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. Marcel Adely, I'm general manager at Southbridge, Napa Valley. You know, usually being unique and special are great attributes when it comes to promoting St. Helena. When we're talking about a collective effort to generate revenue and provide housing that's affordable, we don't want St. Helena to stand out and be different. We, I'm speaking as a leader of a St. Helena lodging entity, we're in support of a proposed one percent increase in TOT. We're not in support of a two percent increase. Fifteen percent overall occupancy tax and assessment is palatable to our guests, and again, it's guests who'd be paying this, not residents, while sixteen percent is too high. If St. Helena's TOT is higher than the rest of Napa County, then we have the potential risk of losing group and leisure business, not only to other cities within the county, but possibly to a completely different destination outside of Napa Valley. So, decreased business would have an effect on lodging, obviously. Local retail, which would be St. Helena's main street, and other related industries. The point of a collective one percent increase throughout all of the lodging partners in Napa Valley is that there would be a significant funding contribution to workforce housing. For this purpose, working together with other cities in Napa Valley and with the county would make greatest impact. While we're in support of this one percent increase in TOT being placed on the ballot as a special tax earmarked for housing that is affordable or workforce housing, we're not in support of a general tax with unspecified use allocation. Calistoga just approved their one percent in TOT earmarked for housing that's affordable, and we urge you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Mary Stevenson, representing our town, St. Helena. We too urge you to go along with the rest of the county, the rest of the incorporated cities, and support a one percent tax solely for housing. I say this for a number of reasons. The first is that we are starting a long-term planning process right now, and I really applaud the council and the staff for doing that, but we're about ten years behind on that. And so, to not take advantage of this opportunity to get a sustainable source of funding for housing, because we haven't completed our housing study, does not make sense to me. Secondly, I think that everyone that's sitting on this dais right now is in support of affordable housing, but it wasn't that way even five years ago, and it could be not that way five years from now. So, a change in administration or a change in staff could put housing down as a low priority again, and if we don't have a sustainable dedicated fund for housing, we could lose it, just in an election. And thirdly, I think that we could also lose it if we go into recession, or, you know, the sewer plant blows up, or whatever happens next, and they take money that should go to housing to other services. We need a sustainable, every year, a certain amount of money to go to housing to support any kind of housing strategy. This is an opportunity to do that. I don't see why St. Helena can't go along with everybody else and make this work. And if I were you, I'd spend your time trying to figure out how to get Meadow Woods TOT tax into St. Helena as a part of this process, instead of fooling around with the language on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Any further public comment?
Council Donald Sheehan here. My question is, how much is this tax going to generate?
About two hundred and seventy thousand dollars at one percent.
Okay, you couldn't even buy a house in Napa County, a low income for that. So, how many years is it going to take you, and how many percentages rate increases is it going to take to get this housing? The average house in this town is probably eight hundred thousand dollars, I would guess, or more, depending on what street. In Napa, it's seven, seven hundred, seven fifty. So, it's one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, doesn't do anything. Anyway, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any further public comment?
Lorraine Stewart, representing myself. Two hundred and fifty thousand adds up, and two hundred and fifty thousand does start you with some developers' fees and gives you some collateral and demonstration to developers that you're serious. It'll get your process started. It also demonstrates to the community that housing is, workforce housing, affordable housing, is a priority for you. I agree with the previous two. I agree with the previous two speakers. I also think that it's important for the City of St. Helena to be collaborative with the rest of the county. We don't have that opportunity publicly. I know you all serve on numerous boards and agencies that work with other county municipalities, but, you know, that doesn't become as public as this might. So I would encourage it for that reason. Also, I'm happy that Visit Napa Valley and the supervisors have taken the lead on this. I also think, and Mark, what you said in terms of the name of the measure for the 2/3s vote versus the transparency, dah dah dah, nobody's going to understand it. No is yes, and yes is no. And voters are constantly faced with issues to vote on, that what you're reading is not what you're voting for. And I think if we come out with a 2%, that's partly for this and partly for that, and what is it really for? I think we stand a chance of losing any opportunity at all to raise some badly needed funds for housing. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pat Dell, I'm speaking for myself, although I am a board member of our town. I like what Lorraine just said. And I've given this a lot of thought over the weekend, having had some conversation about it last Friday. What worries me is if you folks go for a 2% increase, it's going to be twice as difficult to pass as if you join with the county and go for a 1%. The need for consistent money is flowing into a housing fund, which, by the way, I think needs to have a minimum of $1 million at all times. The need is so great that to take a chance like that, I think would be foolish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Jack Stewart, Crane Avenue, St. Helena. I just wanted to point out a coincidence. Earlier in the meeting, the mayor mourned the closing of Terra Restaurant. And in a newspaper article in The Chronicle announcing the closing of Terra, Lisa Demainy was quoted as saying, one of the reasons was she couldn't get qualified help, and one of the reasons she couldn't is because workers in the hospitality industry, including her restaurant, can't afford to live anywhere near St. Helena.
Thank you.
Mark Smithers, Vallejo Street. Actually, I wasn't planning on speaking on this subject. In fact, I didn't even know it was on the agenda. But recently, I've been reading a few articles, and I don't know to what extent you guys are aware of this, but I think a lot of the housing problem we have in St. Helena is second homeowners pushing out, you know, more affordable housing, and then they build, you know, 3,000, 4,000 square foot mini mansions on Allen Street or wherever else. But what's happening around the world is cities are recognizing what's happening, attractive cities are recognizing what's happening, and that they're ending up with a lot of second homes. So it's, I think, the quoted number in St. Helena is 40% of the houses on the west side are, you know, second homes now. And what's happening is, because they realize they're pushing out affordable housing, that now what they are actually passing are vacancy taxes. And so basically, if that home is not your primary residence, so for instance, just recently in Vancouver, if the home is not your primary residence, there's a 1% annual tax on your house, property assessed, property value. So given some of these places that were selling, you know, recently around here for $3 and $4 million, that would be $40,000 just for that one house alone. And generally speaking, I think those people that are buying second homes, you know, if they can afford $3 million or $4 million, they can probably afford the additional property tax. But I think it's something to really consider, because if you really want to raise some money for, you know, for affordable housing in St. Helena, that's really maybe a way to go. And even if it takes a 2/3s tax, I think the residents that live here would be more than happy to see if there's a way for their kids that graduated from high school to be able to come back and live in St. Helena, which they can't do anymore.
Are you aware of any California examples of a vacancy tax?
I'm not.
We have Proposition 13, which obviously limits us greatly in terms of what we can do with taxing real property. That would be my concern, but you raise a good point.
It's not fleshed out. Again, I wasn't planning on speaking to this issue. I just remembered some articles that I'd put in a folder in my email, you know, a few weeks ago, and I said, hey, I mean, if we're really talking about raising money, this may be something to look at. So, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? All right. Let me close the public comment and invite council discussion. If I've heard correctly, at this point in time, the City of Napa, the County of Napa, City of Calistoga, Town of Yountville are all going down the road of a 1% specific tax. American Canyon, it seems to be unclear, but certainly, there's a very strong movement in the county, and especially in the Up Valley County, to go with the 1% specific tax. And at least my initial inclination, and given the difficulty of getting a 2/3s vote, if there's any opposition to it, my initial inclination is that we should join with our fellow cities, Yountville, Napa, County of Napa, and Calistoga. But that's just my initial impression. And I guess we have to do this by four fifths.
To be, well...
Be safe.
I think we need to decide two things tonight. Is it 1% or 2%? And how is it going to be allocated? I think that if we take 1% and it goes to housing, we are being consistent with what the rest of the county is doing. I don't think that prevents us from going to 2%. It's up to us to decide what kind of revenue this city needs. It's not the elected officials of Yountville, or Calistoga, or Napa who make that decision. For Calistoga, 1% is about $480,000. For Yountville, it's close to, it's over a half a million. Here we are, looking at a relatively paltry 250, and we're afraid to go further. We, if we have to go out and make the case to try to get this approved by a 2/3s vote to be sure that we are safe, I think we can make the case to our own residents of why we want 2% instead of 1%. Not unlike the effort that was made for Measure D. What is it about St. Helena that leads us to go for 2%? I have a couple of things. I mean, just in this budget, we just put $200,000 in that was unknown to us a few months ago in order to support our fire department. There are other needs that we have, and this is one way to address them. And I think that after people vote on TOT this fall, if we were to come back a year later and say, hey, guess what? We'd like another 1%, it would probably lose. But I think this is the time to make the case for 2%. On the issue of where we'll be, I mean, if you assume everybody else is going to make this case, and they're all going to raise their TOT by 1%, we're going to be 1% below them, above them. I looked at our TOT reports, our average room rate, and kind of our biggest month is about $460 a night. 1% is a difference of $4.60 on the bill of a tourist who comes and stays in St. Helena. And I got to believe it's not going to keep them from coming here. I don't think it's what people look to when they decide where to go. And in fact, if you look at the Visit Napa Valley survey, I think it was last year, of tourists, 50% of people come to St. Helena. This is the second most visited destination other than Napa. We're always talking about Calistoga and Yountville and their housing and their taxes and everything else. We're ahead of them by like 20%. They get maybe 20 or 30% of the visitors. I don't think that raising our rates by $4.60 a night is going to drive people elsewhere. There was recently an interesting report put out for the City of Napa about hotels and hotel development, and it talks about hotel development in the county, which it says there's currently a strong demand for all product segments. Barring any unforeseen event, it's expected to continue to grow over the long term. It also says that as for meeting space, which I think it's a valid concern, is this going to affect our booking of meeting space? They estimate that meeting space is about 13% of all occupied room nights in hotels. It's an important driver, and people use it during slow periods to fill in when they otherwise can't. It's also, according to this report, generally quite profitable for hotels and resorts. Although room rates are sometimes discounted for groups, the hotel benefits from the use of meeting space and the inclusion of in-house banquets and cocktail receptions. I got to believe that somewhere in the economics of in-house banquets and cocktail receptions, there's an ability to shave $4.60 off of what is coming into the hotel, and allow the City of St. Helena to benefit by collecting more money generally for the things that we need to do. I looked at the City of Healdsburg, which had the nerve to pass a 2% tax earmarked solely for housing. They projected the amount of TOT they were going to collect. They're on par or ahead. It doesn't seem to have impacted their ability to get people to come and stay in Healdsburg at all. So I would strongly urge us to take the lead on what we think we need and go for a 2% rate.
Would you do it as a 2% totally specific tax?
I think we have to treat it as though it's a specific tax anyway, and we're going to have to get that vote to be sure we have it. And I would support a hybrid approach, where we earmark 1% of it for housing, and we can tell everybody else, we've done what the county has done, we're doing what everybody else is doing, but we're also doing what we think we need to do here and now.
So you would have 1% specific to housing and 1% going to the general fund?
Yes. I tend to be supportive of that. Having the decision here in St. Helena and keeping the decision here, I think, is important. I also think that no discussion of housing is complete without a discussion of wages. And that's for a separate day. Maybe we can start talking about that in August. But there's a conjunction there that needs to be addressed, and it needs to begin soon. If we go, you know, along in the county program, I feel like we lose a little control of what we're talking about here. So we, and the housing problem is a very real issue that should have been recognized years ago, but we're recognizing it now and doing everything we can to try to get in front of it. So earmarking 1% for housing, and then a second 1% for what the city needs, and that goes towards keeping it an attractive, workable city, so that those who visit and those who live here get the best from it. So I tend to support the 2% with 1% earmarked for housing.
Mr. Drell?
I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. I guess the one question is sort of the practicality of when this, all this money is gained, is anticipated, I think, $10 million.
Less than that, I think.
How much?
Countywide, I think it's about $6 million, including the cities.
My question is, and you were on this working group, is there any talk about the county sharing money or matching money with the cities? Because I think that's an important part of this. In other words, if we generated 279 with the county by agreement, see, the devil's in the details. I don't know what's going to happen after this passes. What's the deal? Will we be able to get money from the county? Because the county obviously has a policy of encouraging housing to be built in cities, and that money should come to us. We need to make that deal and make that explicit, that we want our share of that county money if we're going to take the housing. So that's one point. What's the deal? Because what I would think is, I agree with Mary that 1% is not enough, but I take a different take. I have a different view of where that 1% should come from. And I'm looking at Visit Napa Valley, and they're giving us a choice. Either you do a TID, which apparently is not lawful to do it that way because of the specific benefit that you need for those funds, or you do a TOT increase. But they do have a language in their report that says you can pass legislation to do a WID. And so my point is, why can't we take 1% of the 2% that they're getting? And they're getting a lot of money. I'd rather advocate for that, get that extra 1% through legislation. It will take time. It says, here it says, "It is likely that in order to pursue a WHID, a legislative change through the state process would be necessary. The soonest change, the soonest a change could be presented for consideration by the state would be 2019, and as supported, implementation could not be expected to begin until 2020." So I would like to pursue that, but I'm wondering, they put that in there, but it doesn't show whether they support that. It would be great if they said, yeah. So it's not a choice of one or the other. I think we should be doing both. So those are the points. I think we need to focus more on what the deal is, because I want to make sure that we are able to share more money. And if we go with a 2% and we earmark part of it, and I'm afraid we're going to be sort of treated as sort of scofflaws, and the county's going to say, look, you got your 1%. We're not going to deal with you. So there is some political damage, if you will, that could come from what I agree is necessary. And then the final point I would make is, this is not the end-all. This tax is not going to be a miracle for us. We are about to, we're working, you and Councilmember White are working on this housing strategy. There's going to be a whole gamut of tools that we're going to have to implement, and this is one of them. Frankly, if new hotels are built, they have to build housing. Yes, that's going to be part of a requirement if somebody wants to do that in this city. They either have to build it onsite or build it elsewhere. That's a tool that we have. This is one minor tool. Frankly, you know, $279,000, yes, I agree. I agree with the gentleman who spoke, but it's part of a much broader housing strategy. I am concerned that we can't pass the 2% frankly, at the 66%. And I think that's too risky, so I'm not willing to do that. I am willing to do 1% and look to the Visit Napa Valley for the other 1% through legislation.
I don't think you have any comfort at this point that the other 1% is coming. There was some talk at the meeting of, after this all gets passed, we'll maybe have some intergovernmental agreements whereby maybe the county will be sharing money, you know, with the municipalities. I'm not as concerned about the question of 2% or what the county thinks when we put 2% on the ballot. I think it's up to us to decide what's appropriate. And I think that TOT, I mean, passing Measure D, a lot of the effort that went into it was explaining to people that this was a tax that was primarily going to be paid by people visiting St. Helena. Well, you can say that in spades for TOT, and I got to believe we could convince our residents that we should raise it by 2%.
Are you not concerned about the groups and the...
Not based on the information that is here and the $4.60, you know, that the groups, a lot of the money is coming, not from the room, because the room has been discounted, it's coming from the ancillary things that groups do.
You don't think they'll go elsewhere because our tax is higher? That's my concern frankly. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's a big concern for me.
You know, it's, I think it's speculative. It's 13% basically of bookings.
Paul, can I ask, in support of 1%, no. In support of 1%, is it done locally in St. Helena or through the county program? What was your thought?
That is a self-assessment. The TID is a self-assessment, and the WID presumably would be a self-assessment. It would be a benefit district.
Right.
They put it in the report as if that's a potential option, and so it's disheartening to learn that, well, that was really just put there as a sort of ammunition to argue for the TOT tax as the other option, as a more viable option. I think they're both options.
Well, I mean, the TID is earmarked for marketing, is it not? I mean, we...
Currently, but you would have to have legislation to allow it to be used for workforce housing.
Yeah. If people in the industry were really serious about it, maybe they'd adjust their TID rate and maybe one percent of it would go to marketing and one percent of it would go to housing.
That's what I'm saying.
But we don't have any, you know, we don't have any idea that that's going to happen. And the fact that that was apparently considered and was dismissed in favor of going to a TOT means we're going to continue to have lots and lots of marketing to bring three and a half million people here a year. And frankly, I'm not that concerned that if we are one percent higher than our surrounding communities, but we are a more desirable place to go, as shown by Visit Napa Valley's own surveys, I'm not convinced it's going to have a detrimental impact.
I think what the report was saying is that without a legislative change, it's not feasible to use TID or WHID for affordable housing. That's going to require a legislative change and perhaps the hotel industry will get behind a legislative change. If it does, it's not going to happen until 2019. Let me hear from Mr. White.
Well, I've heard nothing but support for the one percent and I support the one percent, not the two percent at this time. I think the hotel industry and also some of our citizens have been very clear about supporting one percent at this time. And I, you know, having, working with Councilmember Koberstein on the housing strategy, yes, this is not a lot of money, but it is a portion of, I think, the strategy moving forward that we're looking at. And we're looking at a whole toolbox full of strategies to support more workforce and affordable housing in our community. So I think a one percent will be able to get passed and, but I'm not in support of two percent at this time.
I would just make one further observation with respect to Measure D, the local sales tax measure. It passed, but it passed with less than seventy percent of the vote. It was sixty-nine point something percent, but there was no organized opposition to it. The chamber did not oppose it and the taxpayer group, which is very strong in Napa, did not oppose it. And I am very concerned that with any opposition, which a two percent increase would draw, and clearly a two percent that's mixed between specific and general would draw a lot of comment, would impair passage. And I think we're better off joining the rest of our, joining hopefully at least most of the rest of the cities and the county on the one percent specific tax and moving forward that way. With respect to the county, yes, it's county policy to put workforce affordable housing in the cities. And so they will get some significantly larger amount out of this than we do for sure. But on the other hand, on a project basis, they may make that available for loans to projects that are within the city, as I believe they did in connection with the Turley project. That's kind of the way they work.
We're going to prefer grants.
Grants, all right. So in any event, I do, well, I've set my piece on it. So at this time, unless there's further council comment, the chair would invite a vote for one percent specific, which is to workforce and affordable housing.
So moved.
For a second?
What I'm really looking for at this point is direction on concept and we will bring you back the formal ordinance and a resolution that would place the measure on the November ballot.
All right.
So we would need feedback on one versus two and then purpose. If it's one percent in housing, that's fine. It may be helpful also to have a couple of council members volunteer to look at ballot questions unless you feel comfortable with the question that the other agencies are using. I've just added a couple other nuances in terms of how you might write that. And we may want to spend a little bit of time looking at that definition because this is the first time you've had a chance to look at the specific paragraph related to the use of the proceeds.
And the point you made with respect to this initiative that looks like it might pass, is this language intended to meet the requirements of that ballot initiative? Because there are some very specific requirements in that initiative that focus in on the use of the funds. And so I would want to make sure that we covered everything we need to cover in our ballot statement that complies with the anticipation that this initiative might pass.
Right. And we've crafted each of the ballot questions here with that in mind and they've been reviewed by legal counsel. Mike Biddle has assisted me in preparing this and looking at various options on how we might write this. But there are a few key phrases that, and also portions of the ballot question that not only are reflected in the original, but in the others that are required by state law and we've.
I assume our law firm wrote the same language for Calistoga, correct?
I don't know.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Same law firm, right?
No.
I don't want to reinvent the wheel. That's where we should be looking, I think, for the language.
Is the word limit seventy words?
It's seventy-five words.
Seventy-five words, okay.
The phrase, the word St. Helena, it counts as one word. City of St. Helena counts as one word, so there are some differences on how you count the numbers. But I've placed the word count below each of the draft questions just to give you a feel for if you wanted to add or delete words. We're working within a limit of seventy-five.
Well, it seems to me that the sense of the majority of the council is one percent and it's specific to workforce and affordable. And I would suggest, if they're willing to do it, that Mr. Doring and Mr. White, who support that approach, work with you. I'd volunteer, but I'm going to be out of town tomorrow through Sunday up in the Sierra with grandchildren, so I can't do it, otherwise I'd certainly volunteer. Well, I've got all the food, but I need to get up there.
I would defer to Councilmember Koberstein because she has the passion for this kind of level of detail.
But you can't.
And I'm going into a couple trials that I might not be available for that either.
You know, I happen to have some guests coming from out of town on Thursday and Friday, so the only day I could do this is tomorrow. So I'm willing to hand it over there, the other side of the dais.
So are we looking at only considering the one percent at this point or also keeping the two percent alive to consider?
It sounds like we've killed it.
Okay.
Some of us have killed it.
One percent.
We're just going to add to the toolbox.
Well, I think we have to think about our general municipal toolbox. We have three basic sources of revenue. We don't do much about property tax. We did just raise the sales tax. This is our other major source of revenue and it could be increasing. It could benefit the city in the long run and, you know, I'm sorry I'm in the minority on this one.
Maybe, but let's ask Mr. White to work with you this week and then I'll come in on Monday and see where you are. And if there are any further suggestions, we can always file something on an amended basis prior to the next city council meeting, which is two weeks away. Does that work?
That works. Our plan will be to publish a draft ordinance and a resolution, a proposed ordinance and resolution on Friday for the meeting of June twenty-sixth.
All right.
And then it would require, in speaking with Mr. Biddle, a majority vote to place the measure on the ballot. And then that measure would require a two-thirds vote of the electorate.
Right. And then if this proposition passes, if I'm understanding correctly, it would not be, well, let me ask the question. Assuming two-thirds approve it, but less than, is it two-thirds of the council puts it on the ballot, is it still approved under the new proposition?
Because it's a special, because you've selected the special tax route, it requires a majority vote to place our measure on the ballot.
And that's not going to change under the new statute?
It's my understanding that in order to place this on the November ballot without risk, that it requires simply a majority vote.
Okay, good.
I'm not so spiteful as to vote no.
And I'd like to just say one more thing. It's as we proceed and discuss housing with the lodging industry is if we and the industry also start thinking about how wages tie in with housing and how we work together to make that a point of pride as well.
Mary, I do appreciate your comments. I think they're all very worthy, well-taken. It's not so much the principles that you articulate and it's, for me, it has to do more with the strategy, the political strategy in terms of getting something done. So I'm not disagreeing with the point you made, but I think this is probably the better approach in the long run. And it opens the door. We may be able to do it again sometime in the next couple of years. Who knows?
All right. That takes us to the next item on the agenda, which is receiving and filing. And I've heard some objection to that word filing from Mr. Smith appropriately, but that's, I think, just sort of technical, city-type language. We do have a hearing that's with the planning commission that's scheduled, I think, for June twenty-fifth, where we're going to discuss the SHAPE report with the planning commission. And so let me turn this over to Mr. Prestwich for the moment and then open it up for public comment.
Just a clarification on the meeting that you're referencing. There is a plan to conduct a joint meeting of the city council and the SHAPE committee.
Oh, SHAPE committee.
And that meeting is planned for Monday, June twenty-fifth at 6:00 PM at our fire station. And that meeting will be recorded. So tonight, and tonight, the SHAPE committee, this is the St. Helena Asset Planning Engagement Committee, which has been working for more than six months since November two thousand seventeen, is presenting to the city council their final report. The council, the purpose of this committee was to identify alternatives to address deficiencies and opportunities identified in our facilities, condition, and needs assessment work that was performed by a consultant called EMG. Also to look at challenges identified in the city's long-range financial forecast. And the committee worked with staff in the early part of this year to update that document for the current year. And also to look at feasibility of, the feasibility of concepts identified in the two thousand nine visioning statement and identify financial strategies along with consequences and trade-offs. So tonight, I recognize a number of the members of the committee in the audience. Thank you for being here. They've put a lot of work into this report. They've spent hours over the last six weeks, six months, every Wednesday, two to three hours, if not more. And they've produced an incredible amount of work for you to consider. The report provides an analysis and a number of options for each property. The intent of the report is not to provide you a single recommended strategy, but instead a diverse set of proposed strategies that are feasible and also reflect the feedback of community residents because we also went through, the committee went through a process with the residents of focus groups as well as a couple of workshops with the community. So with that, let me pause and invite the chair of the committee, Mark Smithers, to introduce the report.
Thank you, city council. I just have a few comments about the report as we sort of hand this off to you. And I guess first and foremost, I do want to, there's a number of thanks to be made. I want to thank the city council actually for convening the committee. It was long overdue and I think that was great on your part to recognize the need for it. City staff and city manager for supporting us through the whole process. Jean and Roseanne from Dynamic Dialogue Program for managing the process and the community All the committee's spouses and significant others and family members that lived with this for seven months. The public that came to the meetings and participated in focus groups and the community workshops and emailed us and talked to us. It was, we had a lot of, you know, community involvement and citizen involvement, which was very helpful. And finally, I want to, you know, I want to thank the committee members, Vice Chair Anna Chotow and Doug Barr, Oliver Caldwell, Pat Dell, Jeff Feeney, Stan Knight, Tim Neiman, Joshua Parks, Suzanne Salvistrin, and Glenn Smith. It was quite a diverse group. We had a lot of debate and a lot of good discussion and it all came out in the wash at the very end there. It definitely wrung around a lot, but we worked it through. I do want to make a couple of comments on the report itself and the process. And some of this is a little bit redundant of what Mark just said, but you do have in front of you now a comprehensive report. It was developed over seven months through, you know, over twenty committee meetings, community workshops, and numerous focus groups. And that report provides you options on how to package the property improvements, alternatives for each property, documents varying committee and public support for alternatives and packages. It has comparable cost estimates, phasing, methods of financing, and numerous additional revenue generators that you guys consider as well. Additionally, and there's been a bit of controversy over the last year or so, I think the report clearly, it clearly documents the city's current strong financial position and favorable financial outlook. This has been something that maybe hasn't been real clear to the citizens, but I think if you look at our sections in there with regards to the long-range financial forecast and the financial analysis with regards to different packages, you'll see that, you know, the city's in great shape and, you know, we really have something we can do here. And we have the financial wherewithal to do it, for sure. So now, you know, the city council now, it's yours to take on. And the city council needs to make a decision to meet the needs and expectations of the community. You can't sit on this report and only act on one or two items, as suggested by the Star editorial. It is clear the community wants action and they want action now, not years from now. We, you know, there's things we've been waiting on. Some of these buildings have been needing help for twenty years. You know, the corporate yard is terrible, is dismal, the living conditions they have. And I know you're starting to do something about that. There's other properties we've sat on and we purchased them eighteen years ago and the community hasn't yet, you know, been able to experience any much benefit from those. So we really, you know, you guys need to work on this. You know, once a decision is made, because there can be some debate as to whether the costs and whatnot are good or the phasing, once you do make a decision, the cost and the timing of a selective package can be refined through master scheduling, design development, construction cost estimates for each of the property's needs. Monies that would come from community support of cultural and civic centers, maybe naming rights and that sort of thing, similar to what happens here, you know, at the school with some of the buildings that they do. And I do believe that's, it's a very viable option, especially with, you know, the big support of some, you know, large and wealthy families in the city. And also there's significant existing funds that can be used to reduce the borrowings as presented in certain packages. So you really don't need, I don't think, I don't think we think, you need a lot more input. The SHAPE committee process did this for you and for the community. And in short order, the city council needs to discuss, decide, and act so the community can begin to realize the benefits of new and improved facilities, improved open space, and places to gather. So that's my, employing you to get going on this and don't wait three years from now to make a decision.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does any other member of the SHAPE committee wish to speak? And there will be an opportunity for a good discussion on June twenty-fifth. Does any member of the public wish to speak at this time as opposed to June twenty-fifth? And when I say this time as opposed to June twenty-fifth, this does not preclude a re-presentation on June twenty-fifth.
I'll say it again. I'll say it twice. Maria Crescioni-Stell, I'm representing Friends and Foundation, St. Helena Public Library. First, I want to thank the SHAPE committee again. They've done an amazing job, so thank you all for that. But I do want to very briefly read our position about how the library fits into the SHAPE proposals, SHAPE suggestions. First of all, let me just remind everybody that Friends and Foundation is not the trustees. We do not oversee library operations. Our mission is to raise funds and to advocate for the library. Excuse me, allergies. So very briefly, while Friends and Foundation would not oppose the construction of a new twenty-first century library, our board of directors believes such a decision should be part of a master development plan. a master development plan and involve library trustees, library staff, and a library consultant. All of us must remember that the present library was principally funded with donations from the community, and as the Star editorial said very aptly last week, those benefactors contributed to build a library, not a city hall. As the city consultant, EMG, stated, our library is the appropriate size for a community our size. If anything, it could be expanded to provide more suitable event space. And we want to remind you that St. Helena Public Library has five times the per capita visits and nearly four times per capita circulation as California average. That's pretty impressive. Our library, our city loves our library. As advocates for the library, Friends and Foundation opposes any action that would diminish the library's scope and otherwise damage the institution. So, thank you, and thank you, the SHAPE Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment at this time? Okay, let me close public comment. Any further council discussion? Obviously, we all recognize the incredible effort that went into the meetings, that went into the writing of this report, that went into the process that was followed. Certainly speaking for myself, I have no desire to sit on this report. I hope we can move forward with reasonable alacrity. And the first step moving forward is our meeting on June 25th with the SHAPE Committee. And at that point, I hope there will be further public comment, if there is to be public comment. And I look forward to hearing from my colleagues as to their initial assessment of where they think they should go. I think it's going to take some discussion at the City Council level to prioritize how we proceed.
I have a comment if...
Sure, by all means.
First of all, I want to thank everybody on the committee for the unbelievable focus and the amount of work that was done, and the week after week, I mean, it's remarkable. So, thank you, and this was much needed, and I too hope we can move forward quickly. One of the things I do want to point out is that in the CAFER, is it the Certified Annual Financial Report or Comprehensive?
CAFER.
Comprehensive, yeah. Annual Financial Report. For the last decade or so, it's had the land values of St. Helena are around 8 million, and that's the assessed values. But as we relooked at these eight properties, a figure of 25 million came in on these properties. And then if we look at the suggestion of selling items at 20 or 22 million, so the real value of St. Helena's land assets, you know, are not 8 million, but at least 45 million. So, I think one of the important things that came from this exercise is that we have a better understanding of the nest egg of St. Helena, and that gives more options. You know, if your nest egg is 45 million instead of 8, you have more options in terms of how you move forward. So, I think that was an important sort of discovery, and I hope that we have a method of keeping that a transparent number, so the community always sort of knows where their nest egg is. And anyway, once again, I think that we're on pace to move forward, and it could not have been done without an unbelievable amount of work. So, thank you.
Any further council comment?
I have a comment. Just a housekeeping matter. I'd like you to pay very close attention to how you agendize this meeting that we are going to have, so that we are not hamstrung by the Brown Act, and we are not told we cannot discuss certain things. Maybe it's advertised as a workshop. I don't know what the magic language is, but I would hate for us all to get together in two weeks and say, oh, you can't talk about that, it's not on the agenda. I think, no offense, Tom, it's good that you keep us in line. You know, I think that this process was really needed in this community and really appreciated by the community. It was about a year ago, I think we were in this room with 40 people lined up along the wall, opposing the suggestion that we should jump right into something that we hadn't really investigated. And I think that this process is excellent. I also think, in my mind, we're working on two or three goals here at the same time, and I see them all as related. I mean, what we do with our public assets can also maybe help us do things for housing, and it can also maybe help us with our downtown and our local economy, and they're all related. I mean, Terra is like the perfect example, a business, a loved business that leaves because there's no housing opportunity for its employees. So, I'm going to try to keep as many things in mind as I can as we move through this, and try to leverage our assets and our money in the best way we can to accomplish as much as we can. And I thank you for being so thorough in your work.
I too want to commend the SHAPE Committee for all the effort that you've put into this. The report is comprehensive, it covers all of the issues that we asked you to cover. I know there were a lot of meetings and a lot of sacrifice by many of you, and so I'm very grateful to you all. In reading the report, one thing that struck me, and I want to just quote it, because I think it is aligned with how I operate and how I think and what my values are, and this is on page 87 of the report, there's a lot in the report, but this jumped out at me, and it says this, Joshua Park, I'm quoting from him. Fundamentally, everyone's goal seems to be to maintain St. Helena's small-town distinction into future generations. In order to do so, it has to be considered what ultimately is the root of that distinction. If it is a city hall on Main Street, updated city parks, and shiny new community center, then Yountville would meet that standard in spades. Yet, most people would agree that Yountville has long since lost its small-town distinction. I would suggest that is the existence of families, permanent residents, small local businesses, that contribute most to a viable small town. And I think that's important. I think we, because this is a facilities assessment, we get stuck on the facilities. But I think we all need to understand it's us. It's about people. People are in those buildings. People enjoy those buildings. So, if we align the buildings that we build and all the great things that we do with our core values, and we improve our quality of life for our residents, then we're doing the right thing. There's not going to be one right answer. Whatever answer we choose is the one we're going to go forward with, with gusto, because I don't want to see this here at all, sitting here for three years. Obviously, I was a big advocate of this whole plan. So, my message is to focus on people, and that will get us to where we need to be.
Mr. White, anything further?
Sure. I would, well said. Really, yeah. I would like to thank the SHAPE Committee. God, you guys put in so much work, and it's amazing. Every Wednesday, and it's, every other Tuesday is hard enough, but incredible work. Thank you for all of this, and I look forward to a discussion on June 25th, so.
All right. I think I've said what I should say at this point, and I too look forward to the discussion on June 25th. I must say, in reading through the report, I most enjoyed reading through the letters from the, or comments from the individual commissioners at the end, and I will reread them several times before June 25th. I think we can all probably focus on a paragraph or two that appeals to us in each letter. Thank you so much. Okay, that takes us then to 10.4, dealing with fireworks.
John Sorenson, Fire Chief, I have a couple of things to say about fireworks. We have Don Sheehan with American Legion Post 199. St. Helena American Legion Post 199 recently decided to discontinue the sale of fireworks within the city limits. Due to the recent devastating fires in October of 17, the Nuns, the Tubbs, and the Atlas, which claimed 30 lives, burned over 145,000 acres and destroyed over 7,600 structures. The city of St. Helena is the only city in the county that allows fireworks, unincorporated or incorporated. We're the only ones. You can buy them in St. Helena, and you can sell them off in St. Helena, and that's it. But that's not what happens. They buy them here, and Don can tell you that they come from the south, they pull in, buy the fireworks, hang it right, and head back out of town. If we had a similar wind event as the October complex on July 4th, we could have a similar outcome. The fuel moistures could have been higher, could be higher in July, and some people say, well, the fire wouldn't be as bad. But as bad, meaning, we only burned 20,000 acres, we only lost 1,000 homes. I don't think that we should continue fireworks. So, my recommendation is the City Council approve the proposed ordinance prohibiting the possession, sale, and use of fireworks within the city of St. Helena.
Okay. Any initial comments?
How does this affect our annual fireworks show?
The show will still go on as long as it's funded. It's a GoFundMe, I believe it's at $5,000.
I think he's, I think the question was more, is this ordinance written in a way that it does not preclude us from holding our annual fireworks show?
No, just for safe and sane fireworks. Illegal fireworks are still illegal, but this is just closing the door on the sale and possession and use of safe and sane fireworks. Has nothing to do with the fireworks show at Crane Park.
Thank you very much. Any initial comments?
I have a comment, and I'm in support of this ban, but I also want to ask the question of the Legion. I know this is a big fundraiser for the Legion, or I'm assuming it is, from what I understand. Is there something that the city can do in terms of some other kind of fundraiser or help in supporting, if there's some other thought, for how the Legion could make up for that? I was referring to you.
Why don't you come to the podium and...
Just knowing that, to me, that's a sacrifice of a fundraising source, and is there some alternative that we can put our heads around that might help make up for that?
Well, yes, sir, and I agree with what John has said, you know, we're personal friends. And, but we have been selling fireworks for 35 years in this city. Never had a problem, well, we've had, I assume, some minor problems. But we took it on our own to stop selling fireworks. I don't like the term "ban" because that's kind of like, you can't ever do that again. The city has a right, because every year I would go to the City Hall, I would apply for a business license. They want to give them to me, they don't have to give them to me. I would rather see that than a ban, because that means you can never do it again, ever. And, but I will say, Sonoma County, 27 cities are selling fireworks. Not Santa Rosa and not Sonoma, though. They never have. But I agree with what John says, and we took it upon ourselves a couple of months ago, two, three months ago, to ban fireworks ourselves. We're working on other situations for income. Yes, it's, you know, I'm in charge, but I buy $68,000 worth of fireworks every year, and the income to our group is 28,000, well, gross, 28,000, net about 23,000. We're not asking the city for any help. We have a good membership. So, I just think the term "ban" is, you know, that's a harsh term to me. You know, you can just say, business license, no, you can't have them. And to me, that's a lot easier. Why put it in the paperwork and create all this work when you just say no? Anyway, that's all I got to say. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. My thought is just that it's a...
Oh, I'm sorry. You got a question?
Well, it's just my thought is that I think that that's a...
I was leaving.
I just think that's an extraordinary gesture from the Legion to suggest that, and if we think, you know, what we can do to help be supportive...
We have our own sources, I thank you. Because I, you know, I don't want to cause a war with the city. I mean, my goodness, you know, we're right there on Madrone and Oak, you know?
I don't think we'll get in a war. I don't.
So, I mean, you know, it's a great community. I worked in this community for 37 years. I'm a new guy, only been here 49 years. That's what my neighbor told me, you're never from here unless you're born here. That was old man Moore Solely. I don't know if any of you know him. But anyway, no, I thank you for listening, and that's good. John is a good man, and we contacted him two, three months ago and said, this is our decision. He came to the hall, we had a meeting, and it was our decision. So, other than that, I don't have anything to say. Someone's got a question.
No? Thank you so much for coming to the City. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there any further public comment? All right, let me close public comment. Is there any further council discussion?
I just had a question for the chief. I'm wondering if there's any gradient here between all and none. Have you surveyed other communities to see whether there is an allowance for fireworks under certain conditions, certain locations, certain times, parents or other adults there? Something like that is just not an all-out ban. Have we done the work to say, are there places in the community where you go, yeah, we can light a few fireworks? There, you know, we have the hoses, we have the adults, we have, it's on concrete. I'm just, as opposed to an all-out ban? I'm just wondering if there are other communities that have sort of made that compromise?
Not in Napa County. It's no. And other ones, I have not had any type of, I've looked into others, but I have not had a, like you said, like a, maybe just this area, just this time, who knows what the weather's going to be? What happens if your eight-year-old decides to go and take those when you're not home and go set them off at the lot across the street and take out a block? You know, those are the things that you gotta, you know, if they're not there, then...
We're making a compromise by having the fireworks show. So, I'm wondering if we can make a compromise by looking into that to see whether there's something that's short of a ban, but that's fairly restrictive. And I don't know, I'm throwing this out there for my fellow council members.
We talked about it with the Legion, and we said, okay, maybe just if you are from St. Helena. Okay? So, if you're from Napa, you can't buy them. What would their sales be?
I'm not talking about sales, I'm just talking about use.
Oh, use.
So, I'm focusing on use, not sales. I'm okay with that part of it.
Yeah.
I'm talking about use in certain areas, at certain times, under certain parameters.
Can I offer a few comments on this? Because in a previous agency that I worked in, it was the only agency that allowed safe and sane fireworks in the county. And what we encountered was mixed messaging related to July 4th, and so the local media would call up our city and ask the question, are you able to, are we able to buy fireworks from you? And the answer was yes, and then the newspaper article would say, go buy the fireworks up in that city. And our messaging, eventually, that particular city decided to prohibit the sale of safe and sane fireworks, as well as the use of them within city limits. And the region worked together on a unified messaging that said, if you're interested in enjoying the fire, join July 4th and fireworks, we encourage you to visit one of the shows that's put on within the county. In that case, it was one at the fairgrounds. And so, I think one of the other considerations that we will inevitably confront down the road, and probably particularly this year, related to the October fires, is mixed, potentially mixed messaging, and how we communicate to the residents of the county and beyond.
Thank you.
Could someone just elaborate on what's in the category of safe and sane fireworks? What are we talking about? Cherry bombs and...
No, those are not okay. The Fire Marshal, the state Fire Marshal approves certain fireworks, the ground-bloom flower, sparklers, things that emit smoke and flames X amount of feet high with a duration of X... feet high with a duration of X, and that's, um, safe and sane. That's what the Legion would purchase to sell in the state of California in certain areas.
So this means we can no longer have sparklers in St. Helena?
That's right. The Safeway does sell. I, I noticed in the past, they'll have some type of, um, firework things that is, is not in the category of safe and sane. So there are those little poppers, and there's, um, certain things. And I, I don't remember if, uh, sparklers are in there or not.
At some point, I don't think there's enough time this year, but as Mr. Doring suggests, some type of looking at how it could happen, could it be some sort of event on the fourth... event on the fourth at the, at the firehouse or at, under supervision of professionals that people could have that?
Well, we have a beautiful twenty thousand dollar show at Crane Park that goes on for over twenty minutes.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
And I, that's where we should put our money and actually give a little donation to the Legion for seeing that.
Okay.
That's...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any further council comment? Thank you very much, Chief. Forson?
Do you need a public comment?
Yes, sure. Uh, is there further public comment?
Anthony McKelly, live at eleven-twenty-five Cornellah. I grew up with fireworks here in St. Helena, safe and sane. It was the best thing for a kid. The fireworks show is not really for kids. It's for grown-ups. The kids are the ones that get hit by this. There's no reason you couldn't do something, not on July 4th or earlier in the evening than that show at, say, Carpe Field. It's a grass field, you won't have any fires, all the kids could come out and have a great time. It would be a great event. Thank you.
Okay. May I agree? Little exceptions.
I'm actually very glad to see this happening. They say that nothing bad ever happened. About four years ago, I was sitting on the curb on Vintage right by the Olivier, uh, factory with some friends of mine watching the fireworks that at that time were still being done at, um, uh, at the winery south of here.
Martini?
First thing that happened is a woman was sitting with sandals on, uh, with her feet in the curb, and some little boys threw one of those, um, some kind of a fireworks thing that went sizzling, hit, hit her foot, burned her foot. Next thing that happened is they got, I don't know how they got loose, but they got some fireworks, and there was a field right across the street, then a grass field. Um, there's a landscape company there now. Caught the field on fire. They were able to put it out immediately. And then toward the end of the evening, I heard two little boys, and they were over in, in the dumpster for Olivier, and they were dumping this bucket of stuff, and they said, "Gee, you know, we should have put water in that before we dumped it, shouldn't we?" Well, I happen to know the owners of Olivier, so I went and found them, and they put water in their dumpster, but we think nothing could happen, but that's three little things that I saw, any one of which could have been quite serious, uh, just in one block in St. Helena. I think it's a good idea to be rid of them.
Thank you.
Um, I just have a question about the, um, fireworks that are not safe and sane, the ones that they're selling at Safeway, apparently. Um, is there any, um, restrictions or any enforcement on those? And what defines a not safe and sane, uh, firework?
Okay. Chief?
Um, those are, are more like a party favorite type of, um, I don't know how another term for that. Non-firework, yeah. So it has a different classification. But, uh, I do not believe that they're flammable, but there is some type of device, you know, I'm talking about the little party...
The poppers.
That pops, and something makes it, all the streams come out of there, but, um, uh, those do not fall in that, uh, flammable, uh, classification.
They're not combustible?
Not combustible.
Poppers.
The poppers, yes.
All right. Any further public comment? All right, let me close public comment and invite any further council discussion.
We'll be bringing leaf blowers back next time.
Great. Okay. I move to approve the recommended action from staff. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hopless.
And I'm sure you're, you're approving that by title only and waiving further reading?
You're correct about that.
Yes, of course.
Vice Mayor White.
Yes.
Councilmember Ellsworth.
Yes.
Coberstein?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Thanks very much. Okay. Next item... Next item is ten point five, uh, and this is, uh, council review of a referral from the city of Napa relating to the Vista Mobile Home Park. Mr. House, let me say... Let me, let me say preliminarily, uh, I think I heard from the county, uh, that this matter is in fact going to go to the county planning commission, uh, and that the time for comment by the city, therefore, will be extended. Am I right about that?
Well, I have not heard, uh, about the procedural element regarding the planning commission making the decision. Uh, however, I did receive an email on Friday from the planning director of the county who identified that they have extended the comment period to June thirtieth at our, probably not just at our request, but...
Okay.
In keeping with our request, and that additional information will be provided.
That the county will be providing additional information to the city prior to June thirty. Does that mean it will be provided prior to our next city council meeting, presumably?
I, that's the only information I have. It was a one-line email.
Well, maybe Mr. Morrison could be persuaded to write a second line and tell us what it is that, uh, we might receive the information, uh, because hopefully it would be in time for us to... Well, I think we should put this on our agenda next time. We have a discussion this time, but put it on next time after we receive whatever additional input that the county has, now knowing that the deadline's to June thirty.
Probably, probably would be best practice now to have a staff report so everybody knows what we're talking about.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So just, uh, this is a relatively, uh, unique presentation or, or, uh, council discussion, so it is a review of a referral from the county of Napa and staff, and the county was requesting comments on a proposed minor modification, uh, development agreement, and, uh, sequo analysis for the Vineyard Valley Mobile Home Project located at three-four-one St. Helena Highway.
Vineyard Vista...
Uh, thank you for the correction. Vineyard...
Violent Vista.
Thank you for the correction. Uh, Mobile Home Park located just south of the city limits at three-four-one St. Helena Highway. Um, so the county has a process called a minor modification to a use permit. So just, it's, it's essentially a change to a use permit for folks who, uh, have not heard of that term before. That's a, that's an application type the county has. Uh, three-four-one St. Helena Highway was previously identified or occupied by a mobile home park. However, there are no residents living there currently. However, there is one mobile home located on the site. The staff report had a typo or a mistake in it. Uh, the property owners have requested, uh, an additional water connection from the city recently, and that came before the council, uh, at a previous meeting a few months ago. At that time, the council requested additional information be provided, uh, prior to making any decisions or determinations regarding water service, and to staff's knowledge, no additional information has been provided. This referral then came in the form of a, uh, referral requesting comments on a SEQA document analyzing the environmental impacts of this minor modification project in addition to a development agreement. The comment period that was, that was requested was May twenty-second to June eighth, um, and so that fit between two council meetings, uh, and staff knew that there would be interest from the council, given the previous discussion regarding the water service, uh, and put this item on the agenda as quickly as possible. However, um, this discussion could not occur prior to the close of the comment period. Staff reached out to the planning director of the county and asked that the comment period be extended, in addition that, um, they provide some information to further flush out the referral information. The information staff received has been provided in the council packet. Uh, I did request a copy of the development agreement. Um, that is not a public draft as of yet, so we do not have a copy of the specifics proposed in that document. However, uh, as mentioned, the comment period has been extended to June thirtieth, which would allow additional comments received from the city council to be provided in a formal comment letter to the planning director or planning department of the county of Napa. The identity, or the goal of this project or this discussion is to allow the council to review the provided information and, uh, give staff any comments or concerns that, that they would direct us to follow up with the county staff on, uh, to further flush out the, uh, referral. That concludes my presentation, so we're just, uh, happy to hear direction or concerns from the council based on the information that is available to date.
I have one, uh, question, uh, just initially, and that is, in terms of water, uh, do we have one connection that serves the twenty-two units there, or are there twenty-two, uh, connections, one for each unit?
There is one potable water line, inch and a half line that goes to that site.
All right. And, and that site is not covered by the water agreement that we have with the hall entity, uh, next door?
Correct.
And they're not allowed to use water from, that's provided under that agreement for this particular site, right?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any other initial questions?
Um, I do want to disclose that I spoke with a Jeff Dodd who represents Hall. Um, we had a phone conversation, and I got some information from him, um, about the project.
All right.
So...
Yeah, Mr. Dodd called me, and I spoke with him as well. Me about that. Is there any further, uh, initial comment by the city council before I open up public comment? Let me open it up to public comment. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak publicly to this?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Um, I'm Susan Kenward, and I am a resident at twenty-eight thirty-five St. Helena Highway of Napa County, not the city. And I feel there has been very little detailed information available on this project, including the exact terms of the previously approved use permit from nineteen sixty-one and the zoned planned development and agricultural preserve districts. As a result, it is difficult to make knowledgeable public comment because there is so little information or details included in the submissions to the city of St. Helena or from the county. I have been in touch with the county and understand that they will hold a, a county public hearing on this project, and I am waiting for that date. The halls closed the fifty-year-old eighteen-unit Violent Vista Mobile Home Park approximately eight years ago. All residents who were mostly Mexican and Latino were evicted, explaining that they were closing the mobile park and building upscale multifamily, family housing. They also, at that time, promised to donate one to two acres of winery property and to work with the county to develop farm worker housing on that property. This has never been completed as promised. Since this application is asking to, asking to be considered as a minor modification of the previously approved use permit for the eighteen-unit Violent Vista Mobile Park Home, I would like to understand these changes, I would like to understand if these changes will involve deed-restricted affordable housing or low-cost housing, or will the proposed units be for hotel-like rentals or time shares? It is unclear exactly what is being proposed, and I think it is important for the neighbors and residents of both St. Helena and Napa County to better understand exactly what this project is before any action is taken. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name's Grace Kistner. I'm a resident of St. Helena. Uh, I, I, after looking at the little pieces of paper and little drawings in the packet, um, I, I can't call this a mo... modest...
Minor.
Minor modification to a permit. I, it is unbelievable. There's one drawing that even says "hotel" on it. They've gone from eighteen units to twenty-two units. They've gone from little bitty, single module, mobile homes to three and four bedrooms. They build a sw... they're going to want a swimming pool. It's in the drawings. Uh, I really think this is, I think that they're pulling the wool, or trying to pull the wool over everybody's eyes, and it certainly is not a mod... a modest or a minor... And I would hope you consider it not that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I noticed they tried very minor, and then minor.
I'm Anthony McKelly, eleven-twenty-five Cornellah. Do you know, I'm very concerned about water that we don't have, and this is an out-of-town county business that wants our water. Last time they were here, they said they only wanted a fire connection. Now, I don't know what new information Peter has or the mayor. Be nice if they share that with us, but anyway. But if it is a fire connection, as you know, us residents that don't use water like I do, I pay almost sixty-two dollars a month for using no water. They're only going to pay about eight bucks. That's not right for us to give their water to them.
Or whatever, how many units they got.
And when this water study is done in, in, uh, two thousand twenty-one, I'm going to be paying seventy-three dollars, and they're only going to be paying twelve dollars. That's not right. If you, and, and you shouldn't give our water away. You should tell the county, and, and St. Helena has to start standing up for himself, for ourselves, that anytime the county asks us to give services to a facility on our border, they have to be annexed into the city. No ifs, ands, or buts. The county then will figure out a way to make that project go if they want to, but they should not, because just giving them the water, police are going to have to go down there. Fire is going to have to go down there. Other services are going to have to go down there, and we get nothing. The fellow the last time said it was an airstream park, short-term. To me, that's a vacation rental. They should be also charged a TOT tax, and we should get that money, not the county. So I hope that the city tells the county it's a no-go unless they annex in the city, and this will be a start if Meadowwood comes back and wants a service from us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
I just want to agree with everything that the last three speakers said wholeheartedly. Uh, this is a farce. Um, it's subterfused in its highest form. I don't know what they want to do, but I've never, ever been able to forgive the owners of that mobile home park for evicting those people who were workers in industries that were dependent upon in this city, and, and just told them to go find somewhere else to live.
Okay, thank you. Any further public comment? All right, let me, uh, go back to, uh, council discussion. Further, in terms of Mr. Dodd, I really received no substantive information from Mr. Dodd other than the fact that he did call me back and confirmed, uh, that this property was not under the existing water agreement to the hall property, a question that I had asked. Uh, I am looking at the staff report, says the project site does have a connection to the city's water supply. Uh, I understand legally, uh, that we cannot deny, uh, the property water because, uh, the property had water prior to the time, uh, that, uh, our general plan went into effect stating that we would not supply water to any new connections outside city limits. I just understand that to be the basic legal framework. Given that legal framework, at minimum, I want to stress the word "at minimum," uh, I would want a water limitation agreement, uh, that absolutely provides that this property cannot receive more water than based upon some reasonable base period average, uh, before, uh, the property ceased being used, uh, as a mobile home park. Hopefully, that, uh, does not provide, uh, a legal issue, uh, and that we can, uh, uh, request such an agreement. Obviously, if, uh, if the city, upon further examination, were to find that, given that there's been an abandonment of water service there for years... an abandonment of water service there for years, and that this could qualify as a new connection, but I don't understand that to be the legal framework, then I would be all for annexation myself before any services provided.
Okay. I can hardly wait to share some of the-
Okay, good.
...information that I got, because we talked for quite a while. I asked him, you know, what was the use of this, you know, is it a hotel? Is it something for the ownership? Well, seriously, what this is, is a conversion, just like what Solage did up in Calistoga and Calistoga Ranch is, to where the county has been allowing a mobile home park or a travel trailer park to be turned into a hotel, essentially, as still using licensed mobile homes or licensed travel trailers, park models. So that is their intention. And I asked him, you know, what about this two acres of farmworker housing, which would, he identified it as an acre and a half or two acres behind Dean and DeLuca. And my concern there is Dean and DeLuca and that whole complex has a real problem with their septic system. And how can you build housing back there if the leach fields and such are just almost impossible to build? I mean, Dean and DeLuca's got an engineered system, and they still have problems with it. And they need to, they need to have an eight-inch fire hookup to be able to push this forward. And I don't know that we're under any obligation to hook them up with an eight-inch fire line for this project. I mean, they already have one connection. He was telling me that there was 23 meters there originally, which I don't think is true. But, you know, we may still have to, as the mayor said, offer or, you know, leave the hookup for domestic use, but why are we obligated to do a fire connection? So, and I agree with Anthony, if we're going to do anything there, we should annex them. And annex them in, you know, knowing that if they're going to have to do a sewer system for this development and then another sewer system for housing, that it's a health and safety hazard for the groundwater around in that area. And, you know, if we're going to annex them, we annex them, you know, not only for the water, but also for our sewer connections. And I think we should be looking at that whole area like we've suggested and that we're doing with our general plan, and that all should be integrated into that scope in the general plan and then our sphere of influence and municipal service review. So, that's where I stand.
I'd love to see that original use permit going back to 1962, if that's when it was.
Staff has received a copy. We didn't receive it in time for this. However, it was basically the minutes adopting it with no specifics, but we will provide that information to the council and the public.
And then also, with respect to the proposed housing project behind Dean and DeLuca on the water side, is the thought that that would be supplied with water that we are supplying under the existing water limitation agreement? Are they going to be coming back and saying, "We really propose affordable housing there, and we want additional water from you to support the affordable housing." And if that's so, I think that further would enhance our argument for annexation. That's just a thought. Ms. Coburnstein?
Yeah, I have quite a few comments in the, I hate to hog the microphone tonight, but I've done a lot of research into this and looked very carefully at the county zoning ordinance. And I do know that when these people were evicted, this council went on record with a resolution saying that the property should be maintained for affordable housing. And I'm hoping that where we get to is maybe not just a letter, a resolution, something expressing our view, which might be more informed by the time we get to the next meeting. But my view is, this is an improper use of the minor modification provision of the county zoning ordinance, and we should be, it's something else, but it's not a minor modification. I'll just give you a little background that was in that use permit. Mr. Maloney, this property is three and a half acres. And he, over the years, the county health department calculated that he had basically 18 mobile homes there. When he applied, he just applied for mobile homes and dwelling units. He didn't specify the number, and I haven't seen anything in the county documents that specified the number. What the county also noticed, what happened was, this is an inter-office memorandum in 1969, at that time, a moratorium was put in place in the county on mobile home parks, and certain density and minimum size requirements were coming out of that. And at this time, the person who wrote this memo noted that any future expansion in density and size of this mobile home park from its present status of 18 mobile homes on three and a half acres would require a new use permit. And subsequently, somebody else wrote a note to the file, this was after the mobile home ordinance was adopted, stating that Mr. Maloney's use permit was approved for three and a half acres. To conform with prevailing density requirements, Mr. Maloney could not have more than 21 mobile home units, and that the ordinance now calls for a park with a minimum size of 20 acres. So the county effectively made Mr. Maloney's park a non-conforming use at that time, or non-conforming as to size, but arguably could have been considered legal non-conforming. When they did that, and they amended this ordinance, the mobile home section, which is section 15 of their code, they put in the 20-acre requirement, and they put in a variation possibility. I think maybe realizing that Mr. Maloney in the future might want to do something and might need a variation. And I think it was specifically aimed at him because it said the intent was to encourage the provision of permanent affordable housing and innovative and environmental superior redesign and siting of mobile home and recreational vehicle units within existing mobile home parks of five acres or less established by use permit prior to 1970. That's Mr. Maloney.
Sounds like it.
And when you look at the finding, when you look at the information that is to be submitted for a variation, among other things, it includes the proposed ownership structure for the mobile home spaces and units. And the findings say that the variation request shall result in the preservation or creation of permanent affordable housing within unincorporated Napa County that is, at a minimum, sufficient to offset the project's adverse impact on park residents. The reason I don't think this is a minor modification is the standards itself. It says that the department, the director can do this or can decide to have a public hearing. But these have to be changes that do not affect the overall concept, the overall density and intensity, and the environmental impact of the project. Shall not consider a minor modification if the result would result in any structure or the aggregate of all approved structures being increased more than 25% in size or one story in height. Now, in 2014, I think it was, the park owner went to the county and asked the county to update the county's mobile home park ordinance so that it would be consistent with the state statutes. I'm quoting here, this is from April of 2014. Catherine Hall wants to bring the park up to modern standards for manufactured housing. She's hamstrung by the county's current ordinance. Hall is looking to have two families occupy the homes at Violin Vista. The revised ordinance will permit that. And lo and behold, the county changed the standards, and if you now go and look at the state statute, you have something called multifamily manufactured homes. And this is a transportable structure, designed for not more than two dwelling units if it has either a support system or a foundation. But a structure that is, has a foundation can actually be three dwelling units. So we don't have 15 of Mr. Maloney's trailers here. We have potentially 45 dwelling units, and we have, I don't know what it is, seven or eight recreational vehicles in the back? I don't know what's going on in them. But clearly, the density and the intensity of this project, what's being proposed, is a change, and it's outside the scope, in my view, of what a minor modification would allow. And that's not even getting to the idea that you can't change the concept. What do we have here? We have 1,374 square-foot event pavilion. We have a 4,200 square-foot event lawn. We have a huge swimming pool in back. Every little mobile home has its own plunge pool of some type. We have changing rooms, a fitness room, a concierge. We have nearly 500 square-foot kitchen. All of this in the back of the property with direct access to the adjoining winery. I think there's clearly a change in concept here. There's clearly a change in density and intensity, and I think it's going to go directly to environmental in terms of water use and traffic primarily. Now, the statement that was submitted to the county says that this will not change the number of housing units. I think that's not true. What it's going to do is create a uniform housing stock within the park because we're going to change out four of the stick-built units. Well, those four stick-built units are gone, along with everything else. So the only uniform housing stock that's being created here is a brand-new housing stock that's being brought in. So I, again, I'm sure we're going to get more information from the county, but I think this is the wrong process. I think it's either, it's possibly a new use permit for a park, maybe with a variation that's going to trigger certain things. It might be something more. You know, even if you consider it as a legal non-conforming use, you cannot go in and repair, maintain, restore, rebuild those. If you are enlarging, increasing, or extending the area of land occupied by the nonconformity or the cubic content of any structures involved in the square footage, you can do something provided it does not result in the construction of any additional structures other than those otherwise permitted by the code on the parcel or parcels occupied by the legal nonconformity. What was permitted here were dwelling units and mobile homes, not event centers, not big kitchens. I say, this is not even, if this use is legal, has legal nonconforming status, this isn't even permitted under that. I think there's a real argument that if there was a legal nonconformity here, it's been legally and voluntarily abandoned, in which case, you go back to the drawing board. You apply for a new use permit for a mobile home, if that's what you're doing. Or maybe you apply for, I don't know, a rezoning so you can put a hotel here? Or maybe you apply for some kind of expansion of your winery? But it's not a minor modification, as far as I can see. And I would hope that after you all have a chance to look at this, we would stand up quite strongly and object to the way that they're trying to process this.
My initial reaction is that I couldn't agree more. The whole thing looks semi-fraudulent. Maybe strike the word "semi." Any further comment, Mr. White?
So do we have enough to build, build a good?
Yeah, maybe Mary should write the letter. She's got tomorrow.
You sure it's not called a brief?
So staff is hearing concerns from the city council specific to the abandonment of water rights, potential abandonment of water rights, direction to explore annexation to the city, to pursue such type of project, and that the proposal referred to staff as improper use of the minor modification process based on the apparent change in concept, increase in the density and intensity of the uses. In addition, the previous or past approved use may have been abandoned, leading to a baseline of bare earth for the sequo analysis with specific potential impacts associated with traffic and water use. So the direction will allow staff to formally comment to the county planning director? Should that be the direction tonight, I can write an email and provide that. In addition, staff will be bringing back another discussion item for the council to further consider based on additional information that's provided. And some of the information I saw Councilmember Coburnstein referencing was not provided to staff, specifically that interdepartmental memo. That would be very helpful if staff can get a copy of that to help craft the formalized comment.
Yeah, very good.
I have one-
Sure.
-brief comment. Is that, I mean, I think everything's been said about, but it's this change in use from residential to this potentially heavy commercial use, so, you know, water, traffic impacts. But the other part of it, to me, that it's, it's that it's, there's a disconnect from what we're talking about in terms of the need for housing, that a project comes forward without addressing that, in that it removed housing, and there was some discussion, from what I understand, about, about when they were going to come forward again, that there would be some element of affordable housing that's not coming forward at the same time. And so if we're talking about TARA not being able to have enough employees, the idea of bringing in a new large project that would have a need for a lot of employees without addressing that is a disconnect from where I think we need to be in our conversation. So I'm just, I'm just trying to connect it so that when we talk about things that are connected, if TARA can't find enough employees, what are we, what are we thinking about with other large projects? And so that we all start thinking on the same page when we, you know, bring things
Do we have certainty as to whether this is even visitor accommodations versus, they use the word "housing stock" and "housing units." Housing is, in this first paragraph, three or four times, which would lead the average person to believe that this is some kind of housing, maybe not affordable housing. But I think that we all need to be sure what it is, and the county needs to kind of answer that question, well, what is this project? This statement is really disconcerting because it's so vague, and it leads one to believe that this is just upgrading the housing that was there before. If you didn't know, that Mary has just introduced to us, you wouldn't really know what this project is. And it's kind of, I agree with Mary, well, I wouldn't go as far as the mayor, but it's troubling, the statement that they presented is extremely vague, and I'm wondering why they would be so vague when they need our cooperation.
Well, I think the vice mayor put his finger on it. Is this really a development à la Calistoga Ranch and Solage? And listening to Ms. Coburnstein go through-
Well, Solage did not have that mechanism.
Cuneros Inn, I think.
Solage did not, because I was on the city council when Solage was built.
Well, anyway, Calistoga Ranch, Cuneros Inn, whatever. I think there needs to be a very, very specific answer from the county as to whether that is what is being contemplated. And maybe a comment saying that if it's, if it is going down that road, we need to know that in order to formulate even further- know that in order to formulate even further comments. Because it is, as Councilmember Doring says, extremely vague, and I perhaps overstated the issue. But when I read this through, and the fact that it says minor modification, very minor modification would strike through, it makes absolutely no sense to me. It looks like a misuse of the county code. And I thought Ms. Coburnstein did a great job of putting her finger on, on why that's likely so.
So staff will use the points raised in this discussion to comment to the county planning director, asking for additional information. Without being able to document exactly when that'll come, staff will request council permission to add information to the agenda item less than 10 days ahead in order to facilitate a discussion at the next meeting.
Yeah, sure.
And I would add that I've also heard reference to a possible resolution. And so it may be helpful to have a council liaison or two over the next couple of weeks as we get closer to the June 26 meeting, which would still provide you adequate time to adopt something that day and/or send a letter. So if we have the flexibility to prepare a letter and/or resolution, that would be helpful. And then if there are two volunteers or one or two volunteers to liaison with us, that would be helpful also.
Well, I certainly suggest Ms. Coburnstein. Mr. White and Mr. Coburnstein. Mr. Coburnstein. All right.
Thank goodness we have a fire connection. We have some leverage.
We can, we can wait for a couple of minutes here. We're going to take a couple-minute recess here, but very short. This takes us to our final matter, which is, deals with the reciprocal easement agreement between Los Alcoas and Berenger for the small pedestrian bridge they proposed to build. So, Mr. House?
Thank you, Mayor Galworth. Members of the council will be brief. As you will recall, on October 24, 2017, the council approved a design review for the Los Alcoas pedestrian bridge project, which proposed to construct a bridge between the Berenger Hotel property and the Los Alcoas Hotel property, located at 1915 Main Street and 2000 Main Street, respectively. In approving that project, the council expressed some concerns over the long-term maintenance of the bridge and asked that the council have the ultimate approval authority for easement language that was governing the use, operation, maintenance, and access to that bridge. The item before you is that maintenance, easement, and agreement between the two parties. You will notice that the city has been written into the agreement in a way that's not a full party member, but does allow certain rights of enforcement. Staff received some additional comments from the council which were, or concerns which were provided to all council members, in addition to the public today. And so in response to that, staff just wanted to go over them. There were some concerns over how the funds would be deposited into the trust for maintenance, and also that the city have the right to enforce the maintenance, expenditure of the funds to conduct the maintenance. There was also a comment that the other parties, not including the city, should not be allowed to amend these provisions without the city's consent. There was some consider, or request to consider adding required, requirement that the city be noticed in case of any alleged maintenance default on the part of either party. And then, just in case there are any other folks involved in ownership, they need to be added to the agreement to make sure that everyone is, has been in agreement. Staff has had time to chat with both the city attorney's office as to how these concerns could be addressed, and also with the applicants. The applicants are agreement of all the requested changes. And if we follow the city attorney's advice as to how the city could be brought into that agreement to enforce the funding, it would include a statement, and I could get into the specifics of where it is, but basically, the agreement would be further amended to identify a statement that says, including the right to be refunded from trust funds for any cost expended by the city. And what that would allow the city to do is to enforce the maintenance or potentially expend some financial resources to force the maintenance to occur and then seek reimbursement. So rather than getting more tangled into the private agreement, it gives the city enforcement rights and reimbursement rights. That's one mechanism that those suggests by the city attorney's office as to how to address that concern. So with that available for any questions, the applicants are here to answer any questions as well.
Well, let me ask this question, which is, is with respect to that precise issue, and that is, in the, what I would think would be the remote case that the city has to step in and maintain the bridge, wouldn't the city have the right to lien the properties for its costs? And isn't that adequate protection for the city in any event?
That is accurate. Ultimately, through the code enforcement process, a lien for those costs could be achieved.
So there could be language in here which says if the, if the city does step in, then it would have been told to lien the property right away.
I believe the city has that right currently, but
They have it anyway.
Yeah, all right. So what's before the council is approval of the maintenance agreement as condition.
Any further initial council comment?
I've got one comment that I'd like to just inquire on, is that, is there a need for some language in this to say that this agreement is limited to bridge, maintenance, and operation and not cross-pollination of other business activities? So that it's, it's expressly clear that it's just about this? I'm just, you know, just bringing it up so if it's a communal bridge, that it, it's limited to that and doesn't open the door for other activities that, you know, we're not aware of in terms of, of cross-pollination of the businesses?
Bridge is a defined term in 1A, so it seemed to be pretty clear that it's limited to dealing with the bridge. But maybe the city attorney can chime in?
Let's.
I would just add, if you look at section C, and Tom can chime in on this, it specifies the intent of the agreement.
What page?
Page one of the reciprocal access agreement, section C, right on the cover.
I think the concern here is that the easement is granted for the use of the parcel owners and their permateses. And permateses is a defined term, which is basically anybody that is invited onto the property. And if I hear what you're saying, you think it's okay for the, I would call them customers or whatever of the hotel to go over to Berenger and vice versa, that that was sort of the intent? Not that people could start using this bridge for deliveries or whatever, which right now the language seems, it's basically anybody that they want to invite on the property. I mean, it's a common term, permateses, but it might just be a little too broad in this. I thought it was for guests of the hotel and guests and people visiting the winery to go back and forth.
I would assume that was the intent, but I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that we have it contained into the content, into the intent.
Well, it says here, permateses is, again, a defined term. It says respective officers, directors, employees, agents, contractors, customers, visitors, invitees, licensees, and concessionaires. So it's broad in that sense, but presumably, it's in the context that, that people other than guests or visitors who are using the bridge are just going back and forth like anybody else going over a walking bridge. I don't see that as much of an issue myself.
It may be worth noting, this, this easement does not allow or grant any expansion of either use, and any proposal to expand the uses would require discretionary action.
So if, if, if storage on one property was being, that would not, this would, this would not open the door to that?
That's correct. In that it would not.
I just want another little nit. This calls for recording the document in the county of Sonoma. Might not be a good idea.
Where are you?
Paragraph 19, when it talks about amendments. If you want to amend it, it'll be effective when you go record it in the other county. That would work.
Okay, Napa.
Excellent.
Do we want to hear from the
Yeah, it's just, does, does either the applicant or, either the first party or the second party, let me put it that way, first party being Los Alcoas and second party being Berenger wish to speak to this?
Good evening. Good evening, Las Alcoas. To your point, yes, the intent, to reinforce the intent is just to have our guests, our employees go back and forth. It's, it's to be used as a bridge, not to deliver goods from one end to the other. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Unless it's to the city's benefit, for example, you know, their pickups that were, people park in your red zone there.
You are there for
It might be better for the city to have a little bit of cooperation between the two of you so that those vehicles are not parked in that red zone, which I pass every day. So that might be something to think about. Those kind of things would actually benefit the city.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if there's a way to discuss working together, that's great.
Sure.
Well, any, any further comment from Berenger's side?
Can I just have a point of clarification? And I think Noah was just, might he perhaps misspoke? But you did use a term that this was an easement with the city, adding the city to the easement. The city, this is an easement between Treasury Wine Estates, the owner of Berenger Vineyards, and Procedio Partners, actually Spring Mountain Hotel is the corporation but managing for Los Alcoas. It's just the two entities.
But, I mean, the city is a third-party beneficiary, which is what we requested, so that in the case of a maintenance default, the city has some rights to step in.
Yes.
We're not a direct party, but we're a third-party beneficiary.
Yes, true.
Thank you for the clarity. That was my intent.
All right, so perhaps you can tell us where we are in terms of amended language so that in any motion, we can incorporate that or incorporate it by reference to the, to what you state.
So if there is a desire to amend the document to address the concerns that were provided to the council previously, paragraph 18, about two-thirds of the way, there is a sentence.
What was that? Oh, that was just my name tag.
There is a sentence, starts well above that, but after the word "hereunder," so it would say, "removal work related to the bridge, if the parties fail to satisfactorily perform their obligations hereunder." And then you could add, "including the right to be refunded from the trust fund for any cost expended by the city." cost expended by the city," as a mechanism to ensure recouping of any cost that the city has to expend.
Okay, that sounds good. And there were a couple of other, rather minor ones that the parties had agreed to to the benefit of the city.
And then, under section 19, in addition to adding that it's the county of Napa, it would be that the parties cannot amend the provisions of section 18 without the city's written consent.
Yeah, okay, that's.
We have other mechanisms.
Okay, and?
True.
Anything else?
There is a consideration of adding required notice to the city in case of alleged maintenance default.
Oh, yeah, I think that's a good, that would be a good addition, for sure.
I think there would be a notice would be getting from Behringer because of, as I understand this, the hotel is the party responsible for the maintenance, and Behringer contributes to the cost. So, if it's not happening, this would probably be, we would just get copied, maybe.
And then, I will lean to the legal expertise in the room to identify where that could go, but it seems like it could go under.
12.
Notices, wherever that is.
12 notices.
Perfect.
All right. With those changes, is there council support for this agreement, I hope?
Move approval with the recommended changes agreed upon by the parties.
Second.
No call, please.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Coburnstein?
Yes.
Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Okay, thank you so much. Sorry to keep you here till 9:10.